All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 13, 2024 Hillsborough Township Planning Board meeting. Please show me a salute to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be advised, this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2024 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided by officially designated newspapers, township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents and plans have been made available on the township's Civic Clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. That may have roll call the Planning Board members and also Board and Township Professionals, please.
Deputy Mayor Charlie O'Reilly and Mr. Deborah Absinthe, Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Vanderfleet.
Here.
Mr. Radowitz.
Here.
Mr. Scoboe.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Vitale.
Here.
Committee Member Lapone.
Present.
Vice Chair Pezen.
Present.
Chair Sarachi.
Here.
Mr. Coys.
Present.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew.
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Okay, welcome, everybody. Starting off, we have consideration of meeting minutes. First up is the executive session minutes from November 2, 2023. And Mr. Bernstein, who's eligible?
Unless anyone has any corrections they want to make, which would have to do in executive session, the Board can adopt the minutes. I would indicate, however, to Mr. Coys and the public that the mere adoption of these minutes does not make them public under the Open Public Records Act, since the matters in question are still ongoing.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Comments from the day is, because if you have any, we can't do it.
The eligible members are Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scoboe, Ms. Smith, Committee Member Lapone, Vice Chair and the Chair.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner. Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Committee Member Lapone.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen.
Yes.
Chair Sarachi.
Yes. Next, our consideration of resolutions. We have one that was carried from last week. It was slightly revised.
Mr. Chairman, just for the edification, I had been contacted by the neighboring property owner who got back to me between last Thursday night and today with a change he made. I ran it by Mr. O'Grodnick. He had no issue with it. The change you will find is in paragraph 30 of the findings on page 7. Otherwise, the resolution is acceptable, is now acceptable to all, and we would recommend to be adopted. The eligible members for the purposes of the record are everybody but Mr. Lapone.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Vanderfleet.
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Vitale.
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen.
Yes.
Chair Sarachi.
Yes. We do not have any planning board business nor consideration of ordinances, so now we'll go to business from the floor for matters not on this evening's agenda. So anyone from the public that would like to provide any comments? The public waved their hands, so we are moving on to applications this evening. First...
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
You're not eligible.
For those of you who forgot, it used to be an all-running joke with another member of the bar who used to be here on a regular basis. And when he'd get up, he'd go, "So..." Since Michael and Michael are here normally every week.
Okay, so first up, SAI Middlesex Farms LP, file number 22-PB-15-MSPV. Time of decision, July 11 of this year, Block 142, Lot 34, otherwise or commonly known as 216 Route 206 South. And I won't remove Mr. O'Grodnick. I'll let him describe the application and introduce it.
Good evening, members of the Board and Susan, our member of the public. My name is Michael O'Grodnick. I'm an attorney at Savo Shawk Law Firm on behalf of the applicant, SAI Middlesex Farm LP. We're here tonight seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for the construction of an 18,000-square-foot building and a 12,375-square-foot addition to the front of the building for Block 34, Block 142, otherwise known as 216 Route 206. Property is located in the I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, where light industrial and other uses are permitted. This application proposes the construction of an additional 70 parking spaces, and this applicant proposes to comply with all the use requirements in the I-1 zone. Subject property is 16.1 acres in size and was constructed in the 1980s, has been operating successfully for many years. Of note, there is an approval on this property for the front yard for a 50,000-square-foot office building. As you can imagine, nobody's been building office for probably two decades now of any size, and this application seeks to continue the existing nature of the structure, that industrial flex-type construction. In addition, as pointed out by Mr. Coys, lots that have frontage on Route 206 also have to conform with the I-2 bulk standards, and we're very pleased to announce that there are no variances in this application. And this application conforms to all the bulk standards for the I-1 and the I-2 Light Industrial District. This property has a number of existing tenants and has had these types of tenants for many years, including a flooring guy, a bakery, a drywall guy, a detailer, a boating parts manufacturer, large plumbing outfit, a school for adult and children with developmental disabilities. It has the high school robotics warehouse, painting contractor, cabinet hardware, mainly online store. Of course, this subject property is adjacent to the active railroad line to the north and Duralco Business Center and a heavy trucking business to the east northeast. This applicant, this application proposes that the two new buildings will be utilized for the same permitted principal uses already existing on the property. Those existing uses that are permitted in the zone are office space, assembling finished products completely within enclosed building, research lumberyard, compliant outdoor storage, restaurants. This isn't intended to be a restaurant, but childcare and adult care facilities, contractor facilities with compliant outdoor storage, indoor rec, medical offices and veterinary hospitals, retail sales of goods and services and fiduciary institutions. Just like to highlight kind of the interest that we're getting, specific would be indoor rec, dance, CrossFit. Those types of tenants are interested, as well as contractor facilities, which we're going to talk about for that rear building. As indicated in Mr. Coys's June 12 memorandum, there is a 12,375-square-foot building in the rear lot. That's proposed for essentially contractor use, which is a permitted principal use with outdoor storage, and will describe the buffering and the requirements that the application believes we meet, which is governed, those permitted accessory uses are regulated and governed by Section 188-69. And again, that 18,000-square-foot addition in the front, again, we're proposing permitted uses allowed in the zone pursuant to Section 188-106B. The rear building is currently designed by the architect for essentially three flex spaces, but, you know, it wouldn't be uncommon that that would be operated by one tenant. And it provides some small area for things like landscaper trucks, tractors, snowplows, things like that. We have Mr. Ford from Van Cleef Engineering, our civil engineer, to provide expert testimony. John Menino is our architect. He is not here tonight. I let him have the night off along with Mr. Dean, although we do have substantial reports and plans submitted by both those professionals. Although Mr. Menino from Seminera Architects is not here, he did prepare some renderings, so I would ask to circulate and introduce A-1, which is a front, it's the elevations, colorized elevations that are already submitted of the two buildings. So instead of going through a lot of witnesses tonight, we thought we'd just stick with Mr. Ford. We do have our planner here, David Lawler, in case there's any planning questions. But since most of the comments are technical in nature, I would first ask to pass this out and then move on to Mr. Ford. I...
Do you want to take that and then maybe we'll just pass this down?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to mark this for introduction. Ladies and gentlemen, it's A-1. This is a rendering from Carmine Semerera's Architecture Firm for Building A and Building B. It appears to be dated, and you would be, it appears to be dated August 26, 2021. Is that correct, Mr. O'Grodnick?
That's correct. John Menino is the architect on this project, and he had signed and sealed these drawings.
Signed it, but, okay. We're going to mark this A-1 for identification.
We also have John Visigli here on behalf of the owner, so if we want to swear in everybody that's here, that...
We do one at a time.
Mr. Ford first.
Mr. Ford's up. Yes, we're in.
Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering, 32 Brower Lane, Licensed Engineer and Planner in the state of New Jersey. Here before the Board before, and my credentials haven't changed since the last appearance.
Okay. Unless there's any objections, we accept and welcome back.
The rendering I have on the screen now is an existing condition rendering. It's the...
Mark it as A-2. Sorry, mark it as A-2. And again, just describe it and...
Sure.
And...
Date. Okay.
And who drew it.
And then also I'll be utilizing a rendering for proposed condition. So the existing condition rendering is illustration of the existing site outlined in yellow with an aerial image. You can see the existing building, well, to the right side of the page is Route 206. Directly across the 206 from the site is an existing church. The one access to the site is from 206. That is the only access. We're not proposing any changes to that, which is on the right side of the plan. Although I will point out that this site fronts on that portion of Route 206, which was under construction and set to be improved with a concrete median down the middle of Route 206 with two lanes north and southbound. So this, while today, you know, has unlimited access, it would eventually be right in, right out. And then just to the south of the site, just off the page, is Valley Road, where DOT is proposing a jug handle. So there'd be, you know, right out of this site, immediately onto a jug handle and be able to proceed north on Route 206. So you have the one access driveway that... Bless you. You see the existing building. I'll say it's an L-shaped building with the parking in front of it. In excess of 180 parking spaces exist today. We're proposing, with the two building additions, 30 additional parking spaces. You'll see in the front, and I'll highlight it now so you can see where I'm, when I refer to the front, I'm referring to the front of the site. Just to the left of the entrance driveway is an existing parking area that seems, I'll say, as if it's out of place. It's not a location where people park now. In fact, some of the Board members may recall there was at one time a proposal for a daycare facility just to the south of this site that was going to gain potentially access through that area. That DOT now owns that site where that daycare was proposed. But there's this existing parking, and then a lawn area between that existing parking and the existing building. The original site approval and proposal for this site, as Mr. O'Grodnick referenced, included a proposed building in that area that was never built. So the initial anticipation was that there would be a building in this area, and when we get to the proposed condition, that's the subject of this application, you'll see one of the two buildings is being proposed in that area, that open lawn area. So as you traverse into the site with the access driveway, to the right is an existing detention basin. It's a wet pond. You can see it on the aerials, a wet pond. And as you continue toward the rear of the site, there's a direct line of access driveway that stops right now, just before you get to the rear of the site, that's an open wooded area along the railroad. That's the site of the second building that's proposed, the contractor area yard that we referred to, where will be a proposal with outdoor storage. The site has existing public water and sewer. And now I think I would like to go to the proposed condition, A-3. This is the site plan as proposed, with a colorized version of the proposed landscaping, and again, the aerial image depicting the remainder of the site that would be not changed or disturbed as part of the application. So again, in the front, as you come in the existing driveway off of Route 206, an 18,000-square-foot building is proposed. That would utilize this existing parking that I referred to earlier that's unutilized now, in addition to some additional parking along the front of that building, and a driveway at the rear of that building with parking as well. And that would be accessed via this existing driveway that accesses the 180-plus parking spaces that exist today and service the existing 75, approximately 75,000-square-foot existing building. And that's to remain unchanged. If you continue to the rear of the site, where that driveway is that I referred to earlier would be continued into the rear of the site, where there would be a proposed 12,275,000-square-foot, square-foot building, 12,275-square-foot building, which we're referring to as the contractor yard, which could potentially be suitable for up to three tenants. We're envisioning, you know, a typical landscape contractor or other type of local contractor utilizing this type of facility with parking along the front and side of that building, and then a paved area beyond that, which could be utilized for outdoor storage. We've respected the enhanced buffers that are required for outdoor storage, both along residential and non-residential uses. So you'll see, for example, this is our closest resident at the end of Wolf Drive, and I'm highlighting Wolf Drive cul-de-sac here, our closest resident. We've provided for the 60-foot-wide buffer, even in that area where there's not outdoor storage and a proposed. And I'll refer to some of the review comments as I make this presentation and the results of some discussions we've had with the staff over the last 24 hours since we received the review memorandums. And that would include, there's a 10-foot-wide paved area at the rear of the building, mainly to provide for access to man doors that are at the back of this 12,000-square-foot building. The primary access for drive-in doors and main entrance is along the east side, and north is to the left of the page here, so east is at the top. So when I refer to the east, it's this portion of the building I'm highlighting now, away, facing away from the residence. That would be the primary entrance. But there are man doors proposed at the rear of the building. I suspect to address, you know, building code requirements for access, but there's no intention to provide any opportunities for storage at the rear of the building in that 10-foot space. And what I discussed with both the Board professionals is that rather than have that a 10-foot-wide paved area at the rear of that building, we would just convert it to a walkway on this area that faces our closest neighbor. So there, that takes away the opportunity for any outdoor storage. And again, we do provide for that 60-foot requirement as if there were outdoor storage there. The building setback could be as close as 50 feet. We're not proposing to move the building closer to the residence, just eliminate that 10-foot paved area and make it a pedestrian walk. The outdoor storage would be at the most northerly portion of the rear area. That would be immediately adjacent to the rail line. You can see on this rendering, there's substantial plantings proposed to buffer both the residence and that outdoor storage area. There was a review memorandum that referred to our earlier plan that proposed only 40 plantings and a reference to the tree mitigation requirement. We've done an assessment, applying the economic hardship waiver. That would require 207 trees, and this plan provides for all those 207 trees on this site to provide, you know, for buffering as well as landscaping throughout the site. So with regards to tree mitigation, we're in compliance without the need for any contribution. And as we've, it's been our experience with recent visits to the Environmental Commission, it was the preference that you look to plant as many trees on your site as you possibly can and not look to make a contribution to the tree fund, and we've endeavored and succeeded at doing that for this site. So the two buildings would be serviced by the existing public sewer and water. The lighting would be in compliance with the town code, to the extent that we need to shield lights, especially along our immediate residents. And in this case, we don't have any areas that are in need of lighting immediately adjacent to our closest residence, so there's not lighting proposed there, but we would comply with that aspect. With regards to the concern of buffering and shielding the outdoor storage, also part of the discussion with the Board's professionals today that would be an enhancement in addition to the plan is a proposal, and I'm highlighting it now, along this area, immediately adjacent to the parking at this rear storage area, where there's a curb. So, you know, there's no opportunity to drive past that area, but we would enhance the buffer by providing a solid six-foot-high fence here, so that any cars pulling into this area with lights on would be, the fence would effectively screen that lighting. And then similarly, in the rear of the site, again, this short stretch of area adjacent to the targeted outdoor storage area, we would provide a six-foot-high fence. And I think this would also help to delineate those areas. Besides the curbing being in those places, the six-foot-high fence would help to encourage the limitation of the outdoor storage being limited to those designated outdoor storage areas, and there would be no creep, if you will, beyond the designated areas, and that 60-foot buffer would be protected and preserved by that fencing. With regards to stormwater management, we have an existing wet pond in the front of the site. That actually was a project designed by our office some 40 years ago that included on those plans the proposed building in this area. So we've documented how that existing basin would continue to provide for stormwater management for both the existing and proposed expansion in that area. And then with regards to the rear area, where it's a wooded area today, we've secured a freshwater wetland letter of interpretation from NJDEP dated January of this year after a two-year process of securing that wetland delineation approval. So there are some wetlands associated with a drainage feature, and that's beyond the area of disturbance. But there are two small pockets of isolated wetlands that would require a GP-6, which we'll have to secure from NJDEP. And as part of that wetland permit, there'll be a review of our stormwater management facility design. So continuing with how stormwater is to be addressed, at the rear area, it's a pond-constructed wetland with a permanent pool, a low marsh and high marsh area, as well as extensive plantings, wetland, suitable plantings, and then surrounded by the landscaping that I described earlier. With regards to some other outside agencies, I mentioned the freshwater wetland letter of interpretation. We've also secured county approval dated August 25, 2022, and in October of 2022, we secured the Somerset Union Soil Conservation District approval, and then also processed the 5G3 stormwater discharge during construction approval as part of that SCS approval. And we're also in receipt of January 31, 2024, report from the Delaware and Rant and Canal Commission, where their only remaining ask of the applicant is to provide a copy or proof of municipal approval. Because, again, you know that they only act after a final county and municipal approval, but since the only, you know, remaining condition is municipal approval, their letter goes on to describe how they're satisfied with all of the other aspects of the project design relating to their jurisdiction, including stormwater runoff. And then what I'd like to go into is our professionals' reports. We're in receipt of a May 8, 2024, review memorandum from Christopher Winiger, the chief fire marshal of the township, has multiple bullet points in it, and the applicant would agree as a condition of approval to address each and every one of those bullet points to Mr. Winiger's satisfaction. Then with regards to other professional reviews, we have a June 12, 2024 review memorandum by Mr. Coys. As Mr. O'Grodnick indicated, the applicant is in complete compliance with all the bulk standards of the zone. That is the lot area setbacks, impervious coverage limitations, so there's no variance relief required. There are, on the last page of Mr. Coys's review, page 3, some requests for some clarification as to how we're addressing specific items. I've already spoken to the tree mitigation. We've applied the economic hardship waiver. And since our appearance at the Environmental Commission, I believe it was back in April, we have already actually revised the plan and made that submittal. It's on Civic Clerk. It's part of the record, that enhanced landscape plan that went from the 40 plantings to 207, and all the tree mitigation plantings being provided on-site. and all the tree mitigation plantings being provided on site. The buffering for the outdoor storage, I think there was some concern about the proximity of this paved area behind the building being closer to the residence and the side of the residence. We've provided that 60 foot area, and I think that simple conversion of that 10 foot paved area to a, say, a six foot wide walkway along the rear of that building in this area that I'm highlighting now, immediately adjacent to our neighbor for pedestrian access, would limit the and exclude that area as an opportunity for any outdoor storage. And then I've described the enhanced plantings that have been provided since the environmental commission meeting and the addition this evening of the proposal for the six foot high fence in the area I'm highlighting now, directly behind our closest neighbor and directly to the side of our closest neighbor along the paved area of the contractor yard. We would comply certainly with any state statutes with regards to make ready EV stations as well as compliance with the DCEA statewide EV ordinance. Relating to parking, I mentioned that we have an existing 75,000 square foot building approximately with over 180 spaces that has functioned and serviced the tenants and use of the property for nearly 40 years without issue. I would bring to the board's attention, even this rendering shows the underutilization and, you know, I haven't done a study, but my personal experience of driving up and down Route 206, I've never seen an abundance of cars at the site. So that existing parking satisfies the existing use of the building for these many years. And then with regards to the two proposed areas, both the contractor yard where we're 17 parking spaces, 10 along the east and seven along the south side of the building. That provides for basically one space for every 800 square feet, which would be in excess of what the contemplated uses would require for that building. And again, it wouldn't because they're all new spaces, wouldn't rely on any existing uses for that additional building area. And then with regards to the front building, the 18,000 square foot building, there are 23 new parking spaces that are proposed there. And that's not including the additional about 20 spaces that are in that existing parking area that was in front of that proposed building that was never built immediately along Route 206. So it's our opinion that the proposed parking is more than adequate for both the existing and proposed conditions. And again, we there is a review memorandum, and I'll get to it in a minute, by your board engineer. We would provide specific parking summaries for both those two proposed buildings that illustrate that the proposed uses of those two buildings would be satisfied by the new proposed parking. So there's no reliance on the existing parking for the new buildings. And then lastly, before I move on to the board engineer's review, there is last item number seven in Mr. Coys's memorandum that the no idling parking signs shall be installed in compliance with state regulations. And again, the applicant would agree to that state requirement as a condition of any approval the board may grant. So next, I'll go on to June 12, 2024 memorandum by Penonia Associates, Mr. Mahu. I've had a brief discussion with Mr. Mahu today regarding the number of comments. We would agree to address each and every one of those comments to Mr. Mahu's satisfaction, including all of the, you know, very detailed items regarding stormwater management to his office satisfaction. And again, I think I mentioned this earlier, because of the isolated wetlands that were located at the rear of the site and the need for a NJDEP permit, the stormwater management, which has already been reviewed by DNR, Canal Commission have found satisfactory and would be, you know, ultimately vetted through your engineer, is also going to be reviewed by NJDEP as part of that DEP permit. And perhaps I'd take a breath at this moment and see if there's any specific items or issues or concerns that the board may have or the professionals. There there were maybe before just we did receive another memorandum today from the environmental commission dated June 12, 2024. First, I'll go to page two. Page one outlines the items that were reviewed. Page two starts with the upper paragraph at the top with some four comments. There's a reference to the a need for an O and M manual for the NJ the stormwater management facility. Of course, that's also already included in the board engineer's requirement. And as the board knows, on any application in land development now, there's a requirement, not only that we have that operation and maintenance manual for the stormwater management facilities, but so that it doesn't get lost in some file cabinet. It's been the policy and I think the requirement of the town that Mr. Agradnik's office would be required to record restriction at the county clerk's office. So any future tenant or owner of the any future owner, I should say, of the property as part of a title search would have that need for stormwater management recognized and made known to them. And then there are other comments regarding stormwater management in the environmental commission memorandum. What I'd suggest is a number of these are, I think, are redundant and overlapping with Mr. Mahu's comments, and we would agree to address those comments to Mr. Mahu's satisfaction as part of the stormwater management related comments in in his report, and again, subject to NJDEP approval. There's some I'll get some specifics now. For example, the existing stormwater management basin that exists at the front of the site today that's functioned for nearly 40 years, and you can see it's wet in this aerial image. An enhancement has been suggested to provide at least for 50% of its perimeter, some landscaping or plantings that would be more native and not require maintenance. And right now, I think the part that's mowed now is along the driveway and perhaps along Route 206. But the other portion that encompasses the 50% and lower areas along the edge of the basin, we're talking about the first 10 feet beyond the wet pond, would be planted with, say, a native grass that wouldn't require maintenance, that would help with the ongoing perpetual protection and 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 lower the maintenance costs of the of the basin and enhance it to bring it more in compliance with the current regs. Lastly, sorry, I said I would take a breath, but I'm not out of breath yet. So I'm going to the site soils, we did extensive soil testing, found that the soils on site class qualified for D soil classification, not requiring recharge. So that obviously by the wet pond, both the existing wet pond and the proposed wet pond by virtue of it having permanent pools, doesn't promote infiltration. There's in the D soil classification carries with it not a need for recharge. And with regards to water quality, we're proposing mechanical treatment devices in the paved areas in the rear area. What I discussed with Mr. Mahu this today in in response to his suggestion and his review memorandum that while you might not be required to provide for recharge, can we find some opportunities to to propose improvements that would offer opportunities for recharge? That is, even though it's not a requirement, and and the site soils might not be something that would promote it, but there would be perhaps opportunities to provide for recharge. And some of the opportunities we discussed, and I've discussed this with the applicant just prior to coming over here this evening, and that would be right now, we proposed in the area in the front building, some minor additional pavement. That's proposed as standard pavement. What we can do is convert that to porous pavement with a stone bed on it so that any rain runoff that transfers over those paved areas with standard pavement would have no opportunity to recharge. By converting it to porous pavement with a stone bed under it, it would give that opportunity for recharge. And what we would propose to do is have an underdrain under that stone area that would be connected to one of the local catch basins on site with a cap on that underdrain. So that that is, we would promote this infiltration and not utilize the underdrain until if and when there was some issue with the site soils perhaps, or the functioning of that recharge opportunity. And that would be in this parking area along the front of the front building along Route 206. At the rear of that building, those parking spaces, so that surface area. And then similarly, at the rear building, the parking spaces immediately adjacent to the south and east side of that building would be porous pavement with that underdrain, thus providing for that recharge opportunity to promote some groundwater recharge of stormwater runoff. Now I'll take a break and see if there's any specific comments or questions I could address.
Mr. Mahu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As as Mr. Ford has testified, we spoke earlier today and discussed the key items contained in our review letter of June 12. We agree with his testimony that with the addition of the items that he's offered this evening, such as converting proposed parking areas to porous paving, to adding a landscape, native landscape area along 50% of the existing wet pond. And we talked about a minor change to a liner along the proposed wet pond in the rear.
Correct.
With all those additional agreements that was just testified this evening, our office believes that every item can be worked out and addressed with with Mr. Ford's office. And I and I would also add that with the items that Mr. Ford just mentioned, in our opinion, this would address the concerns of the environmental committee as well, as stated in their letter that we just received this morning. But we reviewed the letter and the items that they've mentioned. I believe Mr. Ford's suggested solutions are an appropriate way to address those comments as well.
Okay. Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ford, good evening. Thank you for addressing my comments. Just what I'm going to be asking for is a little bit of a better clarification as we had spoken earlier today. When looking at the proposed outdoor storage area, those lines are not exactly clear. They they get pretty pretty close to where circulation can occur, especially with all the all the parking. I believe it's going to put make some challenges for the zoning official to to make sure that your that, you know, future tenants are in in compliance and also in terms of ensuring that emergency vehicles have access to get to the different parts of the yard. What I would ask for as a condition of approval is to make it very clear of which areas in terms of circulation are going to be free of storage and and what some of those areas are in terms of how far the contractors can go in terms of 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 putting the different storage in those in those areas. Those are my my main concerns to to the board is to make sure that that gets addressed just so that there's some expectations of if the township ever has to go out to the site, that there's that there's no surprises. Other than that, I have I have no other questions or concerns.
Yeah, we would. We would agree to that, and we could right now on plan sheet, make it a part of the record, we could recite the we already actually have on plan sheet three, the buffer requirements. So it actually recites the entire section of the code on there. And if there's not only delineation of areas, but to help with the zoning department, in addition to delineating those areas on the site plan, we could recite those sections of the code that apply to outdoor storage and the limitations of outdoor storage as approved by the project so that if even years from now they pull out the site plan, it'd be clear.
Thank you.
If I may, to to help with Mr. Coys's comment, there's a emergency vehicle turning plan.
Yeah.
I think maybe what Mr. Coys, maybe what you're looking for is some way to make sure that that vehicle path is unobstructed in the future.
Correct.
Right. That would be part of our satisfying Mr. Winiger's comments as well. Yes.
How would we effectuate keeping that path?
We would delineate areas and cite them as no parking.
So some striping?
Correct.
Sidesage on the plan?
Yes.
In the actual?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, the striping is what I was going to suggest for the delineation of all the parking areas makes it easy to determine what's in, what's out of of the storage area. I think that's a pretty easy ask. Just for my advocations now, the original plan had a wet pond. Why are we using a wet pond in the back as far as it for engineering reasons versus a regular detention basin? What's the reason for a wet pond?
The the new regs have specific requirements with different types of BMPs, you know, best management practices. And for a site with lacking suitable probability for an infiltration, best management practice or a high groundwater table, the pond-constructed wetland is the is the method of choice, truly the only method you're left with.
Okay. I just want to put on the record so people might wonder why.
Yeah.
Just.
And the others.
Engineering reason why.
Yeah, that's the engineering aspect and from an environmental standpoint, as opposed to, you know, the the old grass line manicured lawn basin with a concrete low flow channel. We've moved away from them for years now, and this is, you know, providing for better aesthetics, even though this is, you know, obviously, it's in a contractor yard, it's not in a public view, but, you know, lower perpetual maintenance, better water quality management for the stormwater runoff, perhaps even opportunities for habitat. But stormwater management is.
Is there a fountain in the pond in the center?
No, this wouldn't not for the for the pond-constructed wetland. No.
Just just natural.
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, there's plantings, the permanent pool that's deeper in that is a small area. And and similar to like a wetland, as you move away from that, they call it a low marsh and a high marsh where the water depth is only a foot and perhaps six inches as the permanent pool moves out over those low marsh and high marsh areas. And again, that's to provide for opportunities for plantings that are suitable for a wet feet, if you will. Do plants have feet?
Sure.
Wet roots.
Just a couple more. Is there a trash enclosure for the back area? I didn't see one located in the plan.
We didn't we didn't propose anything back there, and that was one of the comments. And I think we would add one. So there's a designated area, even though it's in a contractor yard and buffered or. and buffered around it, but it would be a typical, you know, wood fence trash enclosure that we would place at the rear.
Should we work with Mr. Mayhew?
Correct.
Good plan. Okay. My last thing is the landscaper in me that plows snow, and actually, 20 years ago, I used to plow snow at this site, so I know it very well. So you're putting fences or proposing fences in the back area to delineate that, and the neighbor, I wouldn't suggest that you give six to seven feet room, because the plows are going to push the snow over that curb and damage the fence, so you got to leave some room for snow to move. So that would be my suggestion, not to put it right on the curb.
Good suggestion.
And my last thing is, is there a possibility on that back area, maybe to, since you have some large grass areas, maybe to put a rain garden or two, possibly, to help with the recharge?
In the landscaped area, for example, behind the proposed building?
Yeah, that big grassy knoll there.
Yeah, we can provide plantings in there that would provide for opportunities for recharge, again, for stormwater management, if you will. We can work with Mr. Mayhew's office, perhaps that would be one of the other opportunities for recharge. If we can.
You guys can work it out.
If we can, you know, make that area also drain into the detention basin, to the extent it doesn't recharge, it would continue on to the basin like it normally would, and perhaps the roof leaders from the building could be discharged into that area to provide stormwater that would go into an area that would have a recharge opportunity.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any questions? I've got a couple of questions, but I don't know if it's going to be for you, Mr. Ford, or we're going to have to bring your planner up. Because in the application, as regarding, I think you alluded to, with the various uses, I think that there's a couple that have me a bit concerned if, and I'm just wondering if it would be, if the client would be willing to remove a couple of those, because I think there would be more additional work done, mainly childcare centers and restaurants, because I'm not sure we have a layout here that's appropriate for those, that they may need, you know, some additional consideration.
I mean, there's certainly no anticipation for restaurant. We talked about that with our traffic engineer. We would have to come back for an amended, because of the trip generation and the parking demand. Childcare, though, I mean, we have a disability, a child disability center that's taking up, I think, two large spaces there. The organization is called, what is it called?
Metheny School.
Metheny School? Yeah, so there actually is a component of childcare that is being used on that site. So we would, you know, prefer to have, you know, since it is a permitted use, you know, the ability to, you know, to conform with that requirement, and the building in the back, I mean, obviously, it's anticipated for contractors' yards, but we could see that being a CrossFit, we could see that being a brewery, things like that. So I don't have a problem with agreeing to come back for a site plan if in, there's a long shot that a childcare facility would want to go into what's essentially an industrial flex complex, but it is a permitted use, so.
Either childcare or food, retail food?
Yeah, I mean, the restaurant, there's, this is not a site that's suitable for a restaurant. But again, there is a sort of a childcare facility there, and it's been operating for many years without any incidents.
Yeah, I'm just more concerned about, you know, the two new buildings, because between parking and activities, and I was going to make a comment about that one application, because I remember Mr. Bernstein made me recuse myself of that one. But there are, you know, there are a lot of activities that go on with what we would consider more of a, I'll call it a full-size operational daycare.
Sure.
You know, so that, again, that's just where my concerns are, but if we want to make that a condition to come back.
The applicant's willing to make that a condition, then we do that.
Yeah.
Come back for a site plan if you have a childcare center?
In the new building.
In the new building?
Childcare or retail food.
Or retail food.
Just if I may, Mr. Chairman, there's already a requirement in this zone, although childcare and adult daycare is a principal permitted use, it does require site plan approval. So, and the reason for that is, obviously, some of the concerns we have here, the board would obviously want to contemplate how a childcare center or adult daycare center could function, which they're not addressing any of those things. So this approval, if this became an approval, wouldn't be considered a site plan approval for that use. So if they came to the planning zoning department, put in a zoning permit application, we would automatically tell them that they would need site plan approval. I'm assuming whatever is currently there had received the approvals in the past, but there's no other part of the current site, as far as we know, that's contemplated those uses. This is an FII.
Okay. There's.
I think you said.
Microphone, sorry.
You know, there were a lot of stormwater comments in the EC memo, and we obviously didn't go through them all, but you're all confident that they're addressed with the considerations that Mr. Ford talked about?
Based on the additional items Mr. Ford testified this evening, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Oh.
From the proposed building in the front to the existing commercial building, what's like the approximate space between the closest point, I guess in the one corner, to the existing commercial building? It looks like it's like 50.
This space right here, between?
Yeah, between.
It's 60 feet.
60 feet?
Yeah.
I guess there's no intention of having any larger tractor trailers to go to the back of that point?
There's no loading docks proposed on either of the two buildings.
Okay, that's not an issue then?
No.
Just thought if there was a big truck, then we wouldn't be able to back it.
Right.
You hear that? No loading docks?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? May I have a motion open to public?
It's all moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
As to this witness.
Yep, to ask Mr. Ford any questions regarding his testimony.
First, on the contractor's yard lot, what is proposed being stored there? What type of items? Are they taking stone, mulch?
Right, yeah, like I said, it's not a very big area, the 12,000 square foot building's not a large building, and it's set up to have up to three tenants, and our expectation is it would be a local contractor, like a landscaper, that would have his, you know, trucks with the trailers with lawn equipment, where he could service, you know, bring them inside, and then have some materials stockpiled in the area, the lawn, the yard area. That wouldn't be, that would be really just for quick access. It wouldn't, these are all materials that cost money to store, so the goal would not be to store a lot of materials, it would be to be able to store materials so you could address a customer need without a supply chain issue.
Okay, so we're not talking putting in salt domes or something?
That would carry with it different requirements in order to do that, a different structure to cover that.
Okay, the parking along the two sides of the building, are we talking employee or customer cars or tractor trailers? What type of parking?
The, all the buildings, as we said already, don't have any loading docks, so they're not set up to service a tractor trailer. They have drive-in doors with parking located on either side of the drive-in doors and the main man door entrance along the front of the building, I'm highlighting now, on the east side of the rear contractor yard building, and then parking along the south side, too. That would be targeted for employees. Typically, a contractor yard wouldn't have customers necessarily coming there, and then the front building is similar, set up with, again, this one is actually with the drive-in doors at the rear, they would not, they would be on the side opposite Route 206, and one of the aspects we thought that was a positive that came out of the application, aside from the utility of an existing improved site, that is, the existing parking, and adding potential additional tax generating buildings complying with the zoning code. But this building in the front, to the extent it does, it would actually block the existing straight shot view you have from Route 206 and those drive-in doors that are at the rear.
Okay. This is a very unusual lot. That point, what is inside that point, not on the lot, is that part of the residential area? Yeah, right there.
Correct. Yeah, there's a paper street right away that the township owns right in here that would, you know, at some point in time, perhaps have been a plan to extend Wolf Drive. We're not proposing any access driveway to Wolf Drive, and that, right now, that's just, it's not our property and it's vegetated.
Okay, so that access to that area, I don't know how wide it is, is only between that point and the sideline? There's no access from, example, an emergency access from the railroad side or anything like that?
There is no access along the rail to this property, no.
So it's just however many feet it is between that point and the side.
You're saying right here?
Yeah, right there.
Right, right, that's where our driveway is proposed to access this rear area. Correct.
Okay, you mentioned you took care of headlights and building lighting for the neighbors, for example, on Wolf Drive. What about noise? Is there any like backup warning beepers, that type of thing, or will the buffering, do you feel the buffering will handle some of that?
Well, the town code presumably takes that into consideration by the enhanced buffer that they require for an outdoor storage area. Right now, in the I-2 zone, the buffer is, well, like I said already, the building setback in that area is only 50 feet. This building, the required building setback, this contractor building is 70 feet from the property line, so 20 feet more than the required standard, and the code in the buffer requirements for outdoor storage severely expands that parking area or that buffer area adjacent to residential areas, as opposed to a 20-foot buffer. In other areas, it's three times that, or a 60-foot buffer. And yes, I would say that that is adequate, and as a fallout of this design, the rear of this building, where there's very limited activity, just the man doors for access, is primarily what is immediately adjacent to our closest neighbor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Grant Colmer, Taylor Avenue. My question is just about the drainage and making sure that the neighbors, that your closest neighbor on Wolf Drive isn't going to get your stormwater management. So I'm looking at the revised drainage area map, Area 3 runoff travel path.
Yeah, the runoff right now, well, the part of the landscape buffer that we're proposing to buffer our closest neighbor is a berm, so that would cut off any stormwater that would not allow it to drain from our site onto the neighbor's site, and there's swales along the, I'll call it the east side of that berm, the direct runoff to the basin and toward that vacant, that right away, that paper street that we just described.
Looks like two feet from the elevation tables. Does that sound right?
The existing and proposed contours are shown on the grading plan.
Okay. On that thing, on the drainage map, it says time of concentration, 6.10 minutes. What does that mean as an engineer?
That's utilized as part of the stormwater analysis to develop hydrographs that are used in calculations to develop the runoff flows, peak flows.
Could you give me, does it mean six minutes and all the water will be gone?
No, it means from the most hydraulically remote point, the start of that path to the end of that path.
Is six minutes.
Is the six-minute travel time.
Is two feet sort of an elevation buffer enough for a huge storm? I guess I'm just going to cut right to the chase.
I, well, I think the berm is higher than two feet, and there's, it's really depends on the.
It says 88. I'm looking at the grading map right now, 88 is low point, and at the high point, it's 90 for where the berm is.
Right.
And then it goes down to 88, and then 86.
It's even a higher berm over here. Well, to answer your question, it really depends on the drainage area. In this case, there's a really limited drainage area, it really is only this lawn area that drains in that area, because there's curbing along the entire perimeter of the paved area that directs runoff, not, it precludes runoff from draining into that grass area and directs it to onsite catch basins that then discharge into the basin.
Those are those big circles, A, B, and C. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else. Now, I do.
Maria, January 6, 7:20, East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 32155, Camplain Road. What is the size of the currently existing building on the property?
It's approximately 75,000 square feet.
And what's it being used for?
It's multiple uses with multiple different tenants. There's not a single one.
Okay. Comments were made that originally there was supposed to be a building, another building built on the property. When was all of this originally done? How old is this project?
It's, as I recall, more than 30 years, and that other building was proposed in the area where we're proposing the building along 206, and I think as I testified earlier to, that as evidence of that is this existing parking area now that would have been in front of that building that's not utilized at all for any of the existing building and tenants.
Is that mentioned in the original application, that there was supposed to be another building, or it's based only on the parking?
No, the plans showed the proposed building.
Okay. Where there's freshwater wetlands on the property, and that's where the building in the back is going to be built in that area?
Yes, two small isolated wetlands, and then a portion of wetlands is along this westerly portion, where we're not proposing any development.
Where what?
Where we are not proposing any disturbance or development.
Okay. And did you say that you already have permits from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the freshwater wetlands?
After a lengthy process, processing the freshwater wetland letter of interpretation, that was issued in January of this year, and we need the GP6 for the filling of the isolated wetlands.
Okay, so the only thing that you got was the letter of interpretation? You don't have permits yet?
No, we don't.
Okay. What about the county? Did you say you have permits or whatever you require in regard to the, what is it, soil conservation?
Well, there were two elements there. First, with the county, I testified that we have an August 25, 2022 approval from Somerset County. This project doesn't run on a county road and has no adverse or impacts to a county facility. Then we also are in receipt of an October 14, 2022 approval from the Somerset Union Soil Conservation. Soil Conservation District.
Okay. I think you had said that the DRCC, the Delaware River and Canal Commission, do they have to give approval or are they just basing it on other agency approvals?
No, the Delaware River and Canal Commission did an extensive review. There were at least two reports received from them and the most recent report in response to the materials we submitted was issued on January 30, 2024. And the only comment they have now that they're requesting in order to process their final approval would be a proof of municipal approval, planning board approval from Hillsborough Township.
Okay, planning board, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public?
Hi, I'm Stacy Paulus. I live at 18 Ebert Drive on here. Thank you for putting this all up and I'm sorry I was late. I'm a principal, so that's what I'm doing is closing out the school. I'm curious about, my property is at the original structure, so I'm happy that these two structures are kind of far away from that. But what had happened in the other was that when this was originally built, the setback was so far that it actually took to our properties, there was about four or five property owners who were looking at warehouse backs. So the setback that you have in the new structures where you're having a berm and things like that seems so much more responsible and so much more helpful for those new neighbors. I am concerned about the water that would come down too. I appreciate that there's water and retention moving from that area as well. My question is, is that what is going to happen to the already existing structure? Is there any, and I'm sorry I missed my, the beginning of this, but is there anything that's going to happen to the original structure, especially behind it that abuts our property?
There's no proposed changes to the existing building.
Beautiful. The property that with the new building, is there going to be parking located in front by 206 still and then there's a new building there? Is that what I'm seeing?
That's correct.
Okay, and the macadam on the road in the parking lot, it's, yeah, right up in the whole area there is very chewed up. The existing structure, is that going to be pulled up or repaved in any way?
We had a meeting in preparation for this evening and the applicant suggested that as part of the new project, it's likely that that would have to be repaced or rehabbed, yes.
The only reason I suggest that and why it's good, well, you mentioned the snow, but there's so much curbing there that it's a very difficult area for everybody to maneuver, including the buses for Methany when they come in and they're dropping off the adult daycare. It's just a lot of curbing that just seems superfluous. I'm not sure why it's all in there, but I go in there a lot. And my other concern is that the attachment, when you're looking at the back of the structure into the new area, where is, how wide will that access be in human terms? It's just hard for me to see it from here. So I'm just concerned when you actually go around the structure and you're driving through on the, keep going back, sorry. I love that you have the cursor there, thank you. Go back, no, not to the new, I'm talking the back new structure there by Wolf.
Okay.
Yes, oh, thank you, you're the best. Okay, so now go up where the green trees are and then that's going to be your driveway now going from the old structure to the new structure?
Correct.
How wide is that? Ish.
25 feet.
Good.
Engineers are not good at ish, usually.
So my concern is, is that when you have the old structure, it widens out there with the macadam and that's where it starts bumping into other property areas that's not mine. But that's, I just, I'm looking for that concern, like just to make sure that we don't have the same mistake that was made in the 90s with this setback and that people are looking at warehouse backs or they're looking at garbage dispensing. It's just, it's, there's so much greenery there that we can do this responsibly to make it look like everybody can have a structure here that we can live with, but that it's not going to be somebody's backyard who's hearing the 3 o'clock garbage cans being opened and, and picked up. It's just for, you know, for me, for quality of living, because in the summer I want the windows open. And I made one call to this property owner a long time ago and said, I'm here in the garbages. And I swear it was changed the next week. So I know that they're responsible if it was you. God bless you. But, you know, but I'm just saying, it was good. It was very good. Yeah, it was you. I swear it was you. Yeah. So is there any outdoor storage that's going to have any smells that we're concerned about? Anything like that that would be there? Because that would be a concern, I'm always outside. Is there anything on that?
Would be a zoning, our envision is, is raw materials that are, like if a plumbing contractor were there, he'd have perhaps a pallet or two of pipe, more benign materials, even the landscape materials. I, I have a trouble with the judge's smell because mine's not good, but like it's.
I like benign, benign was good.
Yeah, it's like a pile of mulch. I don't, I don't think it's offensive.
So it will be a pile of mulch?
Well, I'm saying for a landscape contractor might have a little pile of mulch that he could use for a small little job. Like I said earlier, the, the proper business model wouldn't be a, it's, it's not a material supply contractor yard. It's a, it's a contractor that has some materials on, on, on hand so they can reply to a customer need without a supply chain issue. Yeah. So I don't, I think that all this is controlled by zoning and, and I think the code already has in it, just, just like there's a noise ordinance, there's a, David, a smell ordinance?
That's why I asked.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Please do, I'm not going to touch that one.
So when we start talking about the storage of mulch and things like that, there, there could be other regulations that, that kick in?
That's correct.
From other agencies, even including fire and there might be some requirements to, to do like the proper storage bins and things like that. So your, your testimony is obviously important because it, it helps us understand the limits, but also the idea of, of what's permitted as accessory, well, outdoor storage, it's accessory. So the other thing that the zoning office can use is measuring that as, as well. But the more information that we could get, especially when it comes to the compliance and things like that, the, the more references that there are in the plans that will help us administratively and enforce this and enforce it properly so that there's no surprises when, you know, tenants, tenants come in or when a tenant starts to do something, something we'll have to revisit perhaps each time a tenant comes in and proposes something, something different and, and working with the property owner as well, the management company and everything. It's back to you, Mike.
I can go now?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to jump in if he was going to answer anything.
No.
You didn't want to be quiet, right? The 206, we're still only going to have the one entrance exit?
Correct.
It's awful because of people trying to get in or out of there. It's very difficult and it's the best place it can be, but it's still extremely difficult. And now with the church added across the street, it's been adding a lot. How much more traffic cars do you anticipate being added to the structure as compared to what it is now? Is that a way to ask that question?
The, I think the best way to answer it is this, this is, has, it's under jurisdiction of DOT with the access driveway and there's no change in traffic that would trigger a DEP permit as part of this application. And yes, we're, I don't know if you were here earlier.
I'm sorry I wasn't. I apologize. I'll watch it on the reruns.
We were, we were, we're in that area, well, you know, we're in that area where DOT has, has got a project for the widening. This project ref, you know, respects that and this driveway would become a right-in, right-out driveway. So you'd only be able to make a right out. There'd be a concrete median down the middle of Route 206 and, and as part of the improvements that the DOT is making.
No left turn.
Right, I understand that there, there, there would be a jug handle coming through in this area where you make that right turn out of this site and then if you wanted to proceed north on 206, you immediately have access to that new jug handle by Valley Road.
That's correct, with the two stoplights that are there.
Right.
I just wanted to mention a safety problem, last question, last comment. Behind the existing structure, the old structure, literally there, it's, it's, when you're looking at the far left side by the new structures that you're looking at, there's plenty of space for cars to get through and to drive through. I just don't want the cursor, yeah, go up, that whole area right there, easy to drive through and go through when you need to. I know the trucks can make it through, they've all made that through. But my problem is it's extremely narrow where you come through past my properties. Why? Because I've lost my dog and I've had to drive through there. I am concerned for that area because if you're going to add more here, that whole spot is actually, half of it is still grass. So there's macadam on some spots, but then it's a dirt path with grass in the back. I just don't think it, it's a great way to access. It, I'm sure it's acceptable, but it gets very muddy, very goopy and I can tell you there's a, I know that there's a lot of trucks that go back there and they're tearing it up because I don't go there all the time and I get to see it, especially in springtime. So I'd make a recommendation to do something with the area there just so it doesn't add to flooding or make it more goopy and muddy.
Usually there's a passive foot chain across it because only goes to fire engines.
Yeah, I think for the record.
Oh, it's definitely used though, because I do see headlights, yeah.
Right, for the record, that's an existing, I think for all intents and purposes, its primary function is for emergency vehicles and we, to the extent it needs some maintenance or upkeep, we can do that.
It'd be nice, yeah. Because there, I mean, there's people who are using it because I see the headlights when they come through, so, busybody. Okay, that's all my questions, thanks for that, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ford.
I have no further questions for Mr. Ford. I just wanted to mention one more thing that, since our architect's not here. We feel that this would also aesthetically improve the site. You know, it's, it's a structure that is, you know, definitely been active for 40 years, so we think it would be a good improvement visually from the highway onto the site, which I think would be another positive of this application. Variance free, waiver free, you know, it's just been, it's been a successful site. It, it has a variety, it's, I believe it's fully leased, it's been nearly fully leased for decades, so the market, you know, there's a strong market. It's almost impossible to, as Mr. Coist knows, contractors' yards are very difficult to regulate, difficult to get approved. Most contractor yards are existing and there's an incredibly high demand for contractors. And we, we think that with all the existing contractors that are, you know, all local, this will provide a good, appropriate land use for this industrial zone.
Was that your closing comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Bernstein?
I don't know if the board has any other questions. I would indicate that the architectural renderings are not in evidence and that it will be left to engineering and construction and planning to ultimately address the facades of all of the buildings because we have no testimony as to what this is. So if Mr. Grodnik is resting on Mr. Ford's testimony, I'll point out that A1 is not in evidence. I don't know if there's anything else any of the board members wish to address.
I have just one question since it really wasn't addressed and the owner didn't come up, maybe he can. With the proposed use of this property, obviously the other property is more of a benign business use, the potential of this being a contractor yard, the hours of operation could become, I don't want to say problematic, but a concern for the local neighbors as far as noise, et cetera. I don't know if there's any way we could ask that they not start at 6:00 AM, et cetera, Monday to Friday, or more like a seven or, I don't know what kind of restrictions we could put on, because they are dual butt right next to the, the backyard of a house, even though they're relatively, there is a buffer there and there'll be outside storage.
We certainly anticipate that these uses will be a single shift. You know, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, you know, is, would think a typical.
You want to try later and earlier?
Well, maybe we can have the owner come up and testify just to what his.
Come on, you gotta get sworn in. State your name for the record.
And, and get, and have Mr. Ford walk out of the chair for a change.
John Ischegl, spelt V's in Victor, I S C E G L A A, owner of Summit Associates, one of.
So is it my question, obviously your, your other properties are more benign, nine to five, kind of light use, you know, office complex, et cetera. The introduction of a contractor yard kind of opens up the can of possibly anything going on. So you are in an ally zone, but let's be sensitive to the fact that it does butt up to some, some houses in your west side.
As we said, we don't have any tenants right now. We believe it will be typically the same type of tenants we have now that really don't start before 6, but I will give an example that if we have a landscaper who does snowplowing also, if it's going to snow at 11 o'clock at night, they may be back there if it's a snowplow contractor. So it's hard to make that determination, you know.
Well, the snowplows that are plowing out your area also at 6:00 in the morning too.
Right, so I don't know.
I'll say more on a 90% use, you know, Monday to Friday type weekends, et cetera.
I don't know what restrict, you know.
What's the current hours of operation?
On most of your businesses?
To be honest with you, I couldn't tell you. I mean, I think some guys do get there around 5:00, you know, contractors start off early, right, to get to their job sites by 6 if they're commuting. So we have not received any complaints from neighbors with respect to noise. We haven't got any complaints from the township on noise use, so it's hard for me to put a restriction on it right now without knowing who's going to go in, but I don't, I could say 5:00 if you wanted to say that. I don't anticipate it being a problem. I don't see it being heavy diesel trucks that you're going to start up that are going to be noisy on it.
Mr. Coist, is there anything that we could add that would make, if there were complaints that we could use to, or just ask politely to not start so early?
We're really good at asking please and thank you. I'm trying to think of past, I mean, my experience is more with the Board of Adjustment when, when we have very, very strict hours of operations in those kind of conditions, it's very much spelt out. When it comes to the planning board and permitted uses, it's a little bit less, less common. You know, I, I think having a general range is, is helpful and in terms of how we would administer it and, and working with the, with the property owner, it just, it depends on the language that ultimately the board decides to put as a condition approval in order for us to administer it.
Mr. Grodnik, would your client agree that if the township received complaint says to noise and hours of operation, that they would work with the township? And if a, the township officials believe that there continues to be a problem, that your client will come back to the planning board to reopen that issue with a future date?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, you know, kind of a good faith language in there.
Try and work it out first and if you can't come back.
Correct, yeah. That's no problem.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else as to him want to ask? No, that's true. Now that you got sworn in, you're, you are in the hot seat. Anyone from the public would like to come up and ask this witness? Any questions on the testimony?
Testimony.
On his testimony that he just provided? You're free to do so. Okay, I see no movement.
Motion to close public.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Grodnik has rested. You have this application before you, you have the indication from the testimony of Mr. Ford that the. you, you have the indication from the testimony of Mr. Ford that the applicant will comply with all the requirements set forth in Mr. Coys's report, Mr. Mayhew's report, and to coordinate the issues raised by the Environmental Commission as they overlap with Mr. Mayhew's report regarding stormwater management, the provisions of the proposal as provided, as well as any and all conditions the applicant agreed to on the record.
Okay. Do we have to open for one last bite at the apple?
Well, I think we get that on, then you can open it, and then they can make their last comments.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Second.
Now, again, the public wants to have his last comments on the application.
But do we have to get a motion about, open back?
Motion to open.
Yep. Okay, motion to open back to the public for what we like to call the last bite at the apple?
Then I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, if there's anyone in the public that would like to put any final thoughts on the record, pro or con to the application, I see no takers, so motion to close to public.
Make that motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We have a motion, Mr. Chairman, the second, so unless the board has any comments, Mr. Lombardozzi can take the role.
Okay, any final comments from the board members? Okay, let's go to roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. VanderVlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Committeeman Pani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes.
Chair Siraj?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
No, not quite.
Second.
Not unless you're going to be paying some other folks bills that are.
Oh, watch Mr. Coys' screen.
But I think we will take a recess.
You want to take a break?
We'll take 10 minutes, we'll reconvene at 8:15. The next up is Sherman Track, Phase 2, M&amp;M at Camplain Road LLC, file number 23-PB-18-MSP. MSP, time of decision today, July 13th, 24, Block 86, Lot 21.02, formerly known as Block 86, Lot 21, and this is continued from May 9th of this year without further notice, and counselor?
Thank you. Irina Elgart, on behalf of M&amp;M at Camplain Road.
You gotta hit the button.
There you go. Irina Elgart, on behalf of M&amp;M at Camplain Road, as everybody knows, this is an 88-unit low or moderate income development, it's at the Sherman Track, we are Phase 2, and I have, tonight, we have our planner that's going to be giving the planning testimony. However, I have Mr. Ron Allenbach, who will be back to testify with regard to a few things that we just need to clean up, I think, from last time. First and foremost, there was a memo from Mr. Coys, it was April 16th, 2024, there was one item there, I think, that we did not cover, there was some overlap with Mr. Mayhew's letter, but there was one issue that we didn't address with regard to the superintendent, and that we don't plan to have one, but I'm going to let Mr. Allenbach address that.
Okay, so we're going to just.
Before Mr. Allenbach gets sworn in, Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of the record, we have two certifications by absent board member examination of record slash eligibility to vote. I have one from Mr. Vitale, who's indicated he reviewed the May 9th video, I have one from the vice chair, Mr. Peason, with the same, having signed both, they are now both eligible to participate in this application.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do. Sure, it's Ronald Allenbach, A U L E N B A C H.
So if I can direct you to Mr. Coys' memo of April 16th, I believe it's on page 5, item 6.
My understanding, and I, and I, Mr. Chairman, I will not get into what the state statute or state law requires, just addressing the comment in the redevelopment plan. All of our rental properties, and we have several thousand units throughout New Jersey, all of them are equipped with a 24-hour 1-800 number for residents to call in event of emergency. It does vary from site to site, because typically we have our own maintenance division, depends on normally somebody lives in the area, that's whose number gets, who draws the lucky card to get the 24-hour calls, but we do offer that to our residents, no matter whether it's an affordable job or a market job, and this will be the same.
Right, and the redevelopment plan, from what I understand, gives us the option to have a superintendent unit, but we choose not to, so. With regard to the next item, so we had made some changes in terms of the intersection of Camplain and Buffalo, after reviewing, there was a May 29th, 2024 memo from Mr. Bellinger, which is, I believe, the township's engineering director. Also, I think some comments from Mr. Mayhew's May 2nd letter we were looking at, so we resubmitted certain radiuses, if you could bring those up, and we can mark it.
What's the next, A5?
Yeah. So this is exhibit.
Can we get a description of what A5 represents and who the author is?
A5 is entitled Preliminary Final Major Site Plan, Block 86, Lot 21.02, Sherman Track -Phase 2, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it's three pages, the first one is entitled School Bus Circulation Plan, the second page is entitled Fire Truck Circulation, and the last one's entitled Garbage Truck Circulation. They are prepared by Mid-Atlantic Engineering Partners, the civil engineering project, and they are dated June 12th, 2024. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the first exhibit is obviously page 1, this is the school bus turning radius. What we did is we took a look at what was going on onsite, and also, as well as offsite. The bigger concern we had here was not only just to provide the truck turning, but there was a comment raised by the engineer about fire trucks and their access to and from the site and crossing over the, the center line, and that was a concern, although it's a fire truck and the sirens are going, you never know what's going to happen, so we took the liberty of taking the plan, and we're offering a couple of options here. We are offering to provide a shoulder, an eight-foot shoulder, which will extend 130 feet to the east of our site, and 90 feet to the west of our site. There's existing pavement out there now, so this will take it from where, if you're familiar with the area, if you've driven down, as you're coming down, heading west, the pavement kind of ends, goes out around the bushes, and then reestablishes itself once you get near the next residential property or commercial property across the street. We're simply going to connect the dots, so to speak, and we will provide the 12-foot travel lane, as well as the eight-foot shoulder from center line. That compiled with 40-foot radiuses on the curves around Buffalo Street. We also took the opportunity to widen Buffalo Street from 24 feet to 30 feet for 100 feet from the edge of pavement into our site, and then it'll taper back down to the 24-foot width. It's tapering back down, obviously, because we have the constraints of the stream and the DEP crossing, but we believe that these three implementations, the shoulder, the larger radii, and the wider pavement, this extra six feet on Buffalo Street, will help with any conflicts that may exist. If a fire truck is leaving the site and he does cross over the center line, there is a shoulder, there will be a shoulder there now, so that'll help with that, the cars can simply move over and allow access. There was no issue with the garbage truck or the school bus, that was just something the engineer asked for us to provide, which we have provided.
Thank you. And with regard to, it was Mr. Mayhew's letter on page 8, it was dated, the, it was dated May 2nd, page 8, number 5, with regard to the landscape screen, as well as number 4, sorry, as well, if you could address that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as you may recall, we testified previously, one of the comments talks about landscaping on both sides of Buffalo as a joint of residential properties, which we agreed to do. The other comment was potentially installing some landscaping on the, I'll call it the westbound side, or across the street on Camplain, so when our cars are exiting the site, the headlights don't go through. Mr. Bernstein, I'm not allowed, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to bring up Google Earth or what I'm allowed to use as far as exhibits here?
Well, we're already beyond, you're testifying as engineering documents, you didn't, you didn't draw nor have any part in, so, you know, let's, let's go for the whole enchilada, and then we'll see where we go.
As you can see on the screen, when you're looking, this is on Camplain.
Is it the Wolfson property?
I'm sorry?
This is the Wolfson.
As you look on the screen, this is Camplain looking into the site, which is the paper street, Buffalo Street. If you look, you can see this survey marker on the left-hand side is the front monument for the property adjoining, and then there's another, it's hard to see, there's another stake down here, which is the other, so our 60-foot right-of-way goes from that stake to the right. If you flip 180 degrees, you can see there's existing vegetation there, there's a large mature tree, there's some underbrush, some of this underbrush will be removed for the eight-foot shoulder, but a large portion of this existing vegetation will remain. I will point out as well, there's no dwellings or anything behind this house, the dwelling is off to the west or to the left of the screen, so again, we would, rather than having a condition that says we will plant landscaping, we don't think it's necessary, but obviously we're going to be here in town, and if there's an issue, we would agree to come back, if Mr. Coys gets complaints, come back and supplement landscaping there, but rather than just offering and putting something that doesn't really need to be there, we'd prefer to work it out that way, if that's acceptable to the township.
Mr. Allenbach, for the purposes of the record, could you indicate where you got this material from?
Sure.
And the date of it, thank you.
This image that you're seeing here is from Google Earth, Street View, in the upper left-hand corner, it's indicated that the shot is taken at 2160 Camplain Road, Hillsborough, New Jersey, and this is a photo dated of August 2023, but this is live Google as we sit.
A6.
Mr. Chairman, I do have PDFs of these both views, looking north and south, if I do need to submit them to the township as a record.
Sure. As I said, let's.
You have PDFs of A5?
Yes.
Okay.
I also have hard copies of A5, if needed to hand them in tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I think that's all we're going to address for the time being before our planner comes up, so if anybody has questions from the board with, or the professionals, of Mr. Allenbach.
I'll start off with Mr. Mayhew.
Do you want to put back, probably, A5?
I wonder if you could clarify, you mentioned that you're offering to revise the intersection, and I apologize, I can't read that from here, but.
We can enlarge that.
Zoomed in.
You want the fire truck one, or doesn't matter?
Just the fire truck, I mean, the intersection's going to be the same, but if you want to use sheet 2, the fire truck sheet, and zoom in at the intersection. I was, I didn't get a chance to write down everything you were discussing, you, I thought I heard you say 12-foot travel lanes and an eight-foot shoulder, but is that shoulder shown?
Well, the, what's shown in yellow here is the additional widening to get the 12, the 20-foot from center line, so as I indicated, there's an existing edge of pavement that runs east to west here, and then it bumps out around that vegetation that we spoke about to the inlet, and then as you get closer towards, towards the adjoining dwelling unit, at this point here, it's, at this radii point, it's 22 and 1/2 feet from the center line, so we would just widen in this area here to provide that 20-foot center lane, or 20-foot travel lane, 12-foot travel lane, eight-foot shoulder.
So you're proposing 20 feet of cartway on the.
Westbound side.
Westbound side, from the center line.
Correct.
And how much cartway are you proposing on the eastbound side?
That remains unchanged.
And how much is that?
Give me a second, I'll just wait for Mr. Parkhill, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Mr. Mayhew, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a county road?
It's not, it's township.
Camplain Road is township, doesn't go into Mandeville.
If you could zoom in just a little bit more on the intersection, am I reading this correctly, even with those 40-foot radii, if a fire truck is trying to turn into the site from the eastbound direction, which is the lower vehicle turning right into the site, the trucks would still conflict if there was a vehicle waiting to turn out onto Camplain Road, correct?
Correct.
And the other conflict is if a fire truck was leaving the site and going eastbound on Camplain Road, a portion of that truck would cross over the striped center line on Camplain Road, as shown on your plan, correct?
That's correct.
I've, just for the record, this plan was sent to our office maybe 5:00 last night, so we haven't had a chance to fully review it, but we put eyes on it. I forwarded this plan to the fire chief in Hillsborough, and asked him for his opinion on this latest plan. Want to see if I can quote his comments that he wrote back to me. Chief Winiger, he said, "Mr. Mayhew, having apparatus enter the opposing lane to make access is not ideal, this can create issues with other vehicles and will be exacerbated when dealing with snow piles along roadways." Not quite sure where to take it from here, as we can, as it was testified and as can be seen on this exhibit, there's still potential conflicts. My other concern with this latest plan is the proposed curb is almost on lot number 1. If, maybe Ron, you could, if you have the ability to highlight to help people, exactly, right at that corner. Unfortunately, Buffalo Street right-of-way does not have a radius at that lower corner like it does in the upper corner. And so I would be concerned grading and constructing that curb so close to that private residential property line, I don't know if, maybe it makes sense to shift Buffalo Street a little bit east to.
Right.
Provide a little bit of separation. I don't know if it has to necessarily be centered.
Yeah, I think, because Buffalo Street's currently a 60-foot right-of-way, so there is room there that, instead of having, you know, it doesn't have to be exactly in the center, you could shift it to the east to eliminate that potential conflict where you have the, where you don't have the radii on a property.
So, you know, based on your testimony time, I'd be more comfortable shifting that proposed cartway a little bit farther east away from the parking line. As far as the conflicts that still remain, our office still believes that it's appropriate to provide a shoulder on the eastbound lane, and that will help facilitate limiting the type of conflict. We did a little bit of research, and there, Camplain Road is identified as a major collector in Hillsborough based on their road classification, so we looked at other major collectors in Hillsborough. The standard road is 12-foot travel with an eight-foot shoulder, and we actually looked at other T intersections in the township, such as Joshua Road intersecting on Hillsborough Road. Hillsborough's a major collector, 12-foot travel lanes, eight-foot shoulders, and so our office took the Hillsborough fire truck and ran it through that intersection, and there's no conflicts going in or out. We looked at Millstone River Road, and the intersection with Hillcrest Road, again, it's a local residential road intersecting at a T intersection with a major collector road. Again, the major collector has 12-foot travel with an eight-foot shoulder, and again, there's no conflicts with the fire trucks entering or exiting Hillcrest onto Millstone, so I'm not sure why we would proceed with a project with known potential conflicts and proceed with improvements that are less safe than what were done elsewhere in the township. township. I'll leave it to the Fire Chief and the board to decide, but I think if their shoulders were added to Camplain Road for a short distance, this would help minimize those conflicts.
Mr. Chairman, and again, I, I would agree to work with the professionals to see, you know, one of the issues we had here is utilities. You know, what we're trying to avoid, you can see on the exhibit here, there's a large utility pole as soon as you make that right turn onto Camplain. Providing an eight-foot shoulder would require that pole to be relocated, and, you know, you never know what happens when you move one pole. Sometimes there's not slack, and you end up moving more than one pole. It's just not cost-effective. Maybe there's a way where we could provide a partial shoulder, so when this fire truck comes around a corner, it's wide enough for him, the back end of the car, the back end of the truck to still stay on the pavement and avoid that conflict, and by the time he reaches the telephone pole, he's back into the travel lane, so to speak. I think there's a couple of ways that we could work with the township engineer and the fire official and come up with a compromise that works for everybody without going through and just committing to eight-foot shoulders up and down the road and unnecessary costs of culvert to the west and utility poles, or utility poles, potentially to the, to the east.
Okay. So, so you'll find a way to eliminate the conflict.
Yeah, we understand, you know, the conflict there, we, we get it, and we understand why it's got to, either if it's not eliminated, it'd be minimized, you know, instead of being three to five feet over the line, get it, it's one foot over the line.
I, I would be reluctant, because now we have something on record from the fire official, and God forbid, there's some type of collision. There's a lot of liability out there.
We would agree to work with the, with the Fire Commissioner.
The condition of approval for the parties to work between the applicant, board engineer, fire department, to try to come up with a solution. If you can't, we'll have to address it at some point.
Mr. Bernstein, if we can, we just had the township engineer, only because he commented on, in his memo as well.
Let me just say for the record, that our office would be uncomfortable taking the liability of approving the plan with conflicts unless the fire official specifically in writing approved that geometry.
No, I, I would be in agreement with that. The fire official needs to sign off on this.
Thank you.
And we would agree to that condition.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Coys? Because I think this started off with one of your comments.
It did, it's been, it's been a while, thank you. So just clarification, Mr. Allenback, and thank you again for, for addressing my question. So looking at the, looking at the statute, it gives the option of having the superintendent or providing the 24-hour service. So you're just, you're clarifying that it would be the 24-hour service instead of the superintendent, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Board members?
Yeah, I think I, just to reiterate, I believe I said in the past, I still think that it needs to be wider, because there's a lot of traffic going in and out of Manville at a lot of times, whether it's the morning, the afternoon, and the evening, to making that turn to the right with traffic backing up. If the shoulder was wider, that's what my concern is. It's almost similar to the turn, the radius. If it was opened up a little bit, I think it would be better if it could be done. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to open to public. One favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public that would like to question this witness on his testimony?
Maria Janus, 6720 East Freck Avenue, and I'm a property owner on Camplain Road, 2155 Camplain Road. Why is there not going to be a superintendent versus just having a 24-hour phone number? I think the other development, does the other development have a superintendent, or is the same situation with a 24-hour number a call?
First question was why we decided for 24-hour, because that's our business model, that's what we do at all of our sites, and that's an option that we are allowed to choose, and we chose that one, and I am not familiar with Phase 1 and what they do over there.
Okay. So who looked at this entrance issue over here, that there's still a problem, and a comment was made that, that this is less safe, less safe? So why, why is it, why is it still a concern? Why haven't the proper changes been made to make this safe?
I think we've already come to an agreement that they're going to work with the professionals and, more importantly, the fire official to get, sign off on a, I'll call it, an improved design.
Why, why can't something be shown before you say we're going to work with? Why, why can't the proper, proper?
Because the fire official, we would be more than comfortable, the fire official is the expert on this, and it, this is, it's, it's not uncommon to put conditions on this and allow applicants to work with township officials.
I think Mr. Mayhew had stated a few other locations in Hillsborough that are collector roads, and things are done properly over there, whereas this is a mess, and it continues to be a mess, and this is what's being presented to the public.
You got a question?
Yeah, why? Why?
We're still working on it, as we just said.
And, and there's going to be a decision made on this today?
We don't know.
It needs to be looked at. When I hear a statement that says "less safe,"
Yeah, Ms. Janus.
That needs to be looked at.
It's, trust us, it's going to be looked at. Anyone else from the public? Is there a head shake now, so?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call Ms. Christine Cofone, Phone and Associates, who's going to be our planner for this evening.
Okay, Ms. Cofone, say hi to Mike.
Hello. Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I'm testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner. I've been testifying as such for about 28 years in the state of New Jersey now, have been qualified here in Hillsborough and hundreds of other boards throughout the state. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services. My licenses are current and valid, and I'm also a court-appointed special adjudicator in about three dozen communities for affordable housing. I guess that's relevant, right?
I would move that she be admitted as an expert in planning, if that's appropriate?
And no changes in your, any licenses, certifications since the last time you were here?
No, I just renewed them both, so the AICP and New Jersey license are both good for another two years.
Okay, unless there's any objections, we approve, or we accept, sorry. You may continue.
Thank you. So, Ms. Cofone, so you've taken a look at some of the review letters and also what has been identified as waivers. If you could just go through some of the waivers and give us your opinion as to whether they're justified?
Yes, of course. Again, for the record, Christine Nazzaro Cofone, good evening. It's nice to be here, finally getting a speaking part on this application. So this is what I would consider a substantially conforming application. We need just a handful of waivers from the township's redevelopment plan for this property. This is also what I would consider an important property. This property, as you know, is providing for 88 units of low and moderate income housing. So this is a 100% affordable project, and the reason it's so substantially important to your housing element and fair share plan is not only are you claiming credits for the 88 units, but you're also claiming 75 rental bonus credits from this property. So collectively, this project is contributing 163 total credits of units towards your affordable housing element and fair share plan that was approved by the courts a few years ago. So it's what I would consider an important plan. And of course, in order to be eligible for rental bonus credits, the site has to, you know, have a reasonable success or has to be relatively likely to provide the affordable housing. So it's, it's a very important project. Again, the density and the unit mix and the proposed unit type, the bulk criteria, as far as setbacks, are all conforming. This is a fairly constrained site. It's about 31, almost 32 acres, and only about nine of those acres are usable. It is an existing treeed site, so we are asking for some relief relative to the location of our detention basin-outfall structures. We are locating them in the stream corridor. They have been contemplated in our buffer averaging plan, and as was testified by our engineer, there is no other way for us to accomplish our stable drainage plan without having them where they are. Given the fact that this site is so constrained, we really have no other, no other areas to place them. In addition to that, we are asking for some relief from the stream corridor crossing out to Camplain. I know there were some substantial discussions about having access through the RPM or the adjoining site, the, the Phase 1 of this, which would also require a stream corridor crossing. Collectively, as a team, we felt that that would avoid, to have the traffic going out to Camplain, avoids running the traffic through a private development, which is RPM, and it also avoids having all the traffic from the two communities go to one point of access on Camplain. The ordinance here in Hillsborough is very clear, and when I read Section 188-64 of the ordinance, it reads specifically, "Regarding waivers for activities permitted in stream corridors, waivers required for activities permitted in stream corridors when there is no reasonable or prudent alternative. Subject to a waiver by the board having jurisdiction in the stream corridor when subdivision or site plans cannot be designed in the matter set forth in subsection D36 above, or in the case of a pre-existing lot with one or two family dwellings, where the zoning officer determines there is insufficient room outside the stream corridor for the proposed permitted accessory uses, the following activities are permitted, subject to conformance of best management practices." So, one of the things that are permitted at Section 10 is detention or retention basins and outfall structures. That section of your ordinance goes on to read, "That waivers required for activities permitted in stream corridors, when prohibiting such activities would cause hardships, new structures other than those permitted exceptions." And then it goes on to read that, "In the stream corridor, only upon a demonstration by the applicant, that prohibiting such activities would result in a hardship and/or would conflict with a compelling public need." As a 100% affordable project, this is absolutely an inherently beneficial use, and while we're not here on a use variance, if we were on a use variance case in New Jersey, it is abundantly clear that the, the, in use variance would presumptively satisfy the positive criteria, because it promotes the public good and the general welfare. So I think from a planning point of view, we can certainly agree that this is a compelling public need to provide for affordable housing. So as far as those first two waivers, I, I see that we are actually meeting the intent of your ordinance, and I think your ordinance actually sets up a very nice structure to allow for both the detention basin-outfall structures.
And if I could also, we had agreed at some point to provide pedestrian access into Phase 1 from Phase 2.
Yes.
So, and that was a request from the board. So we were looking to see if that was justified as a waiver as well.
Yes, that's number six on my list. I'm working my way down. It's last on my list.
I jumped ahead.
But I'll get there. I'm a little jet-lagged, so I'm sorry if I'm not my usual speedy pace, but I'm sure our court reporter loves jet-lagged planning testimony, because it's definitely a bit slower than it usually is. So those are the two, I'm sort of grouping them together, those were the first two for the stream corridor. The next two I'll talk about is the tree removal mitigation. Now, there is a requirement in the, in the redevelopment plan that we have 60% contiguous uninterrupted conservation areas and/or open space, where we're providing 66%. So we absolutely exceed, not just meet, but we exceed the requirement in the redevelopment plan for contiguous uninterrupted conservation and open space. So to the extent that is not the controlling governance, and we have to seek the relief for the tree removal maximum and the tree removal mitigation, we will in fact sink those waivers. The ordinance at Section 188, 163B, has a governor of 20% for tree removal, and we are at 37%, and that is simply a function of the existing condition on the subject property. That was granted as a waiver in accordance with the Phase 1. I believe they were at about 34% per their resolution of approval. So that is simply a function of, without that relief, you're not developing this site, which gets back to this being an important part of your housing plan that was vetted as being a site that is suitable, available, developable, and approvable, and also creating a realistic opportunity for the rental bonus credits. So without that relief, you certainly don't have a realistic opportunity to develop the property and claim both the credits for the units as well as the rental bonus credits. And then same thing for the tree removal mitigation. We are removing approximately 4,060 trees, where we're putting 283 back. You know, we have done, done our best to work in the conference, the fines of the site that we have, and putting back as many trees as we can, and so that number looks to be at 283 now. And again, to the extent that the board doesn't consider that 60% to be the governance, because that is clearly what the redevelopment plan requires, and we comply with, to the extent that we do need to comply with these other two provisions, which seems to be that it, it would be the redevelopment plan and the contiguous uninterrupted conservation and open space that would control, but we are seeking that replacement, or seeking those waivers if in fact they are required. The other relief that we're asking for, which I, I believe this one, we also, I, I think we need it based on the structure of the redevelopment plan, but this is for the two points of access. So Mr. Coys, in his review, points out that in Section 3.5 of the redevelopment plan, it reads specifically, "The redeeformer of parcel B will provide at least two street connections to the surrounding street network that will allow for a free flow of traffic within and through the rehabilitation area, including emergency vehicles and school buses." So we are actually providing two means of vehicular access, even though one of them will be an emergency access we have out to Jackson Street, but we do have a full access to Camplain, and as was testified to at the last meeting, we will absolutely provide pedestrian connectivity to Phase 1 if the DEP will approve our connection through there. So you do have at least two street connections to the surrounding street network that will allow for a free flow of traffic within and through the rehabilitation area and including emergency vehicles and school buses. So the redevelopment plan does specifically reference emergency vehicles, and I think with the access plan that is being proposed and agreed to by this applicant, we absolutely meet the spirit and intent of Section 3.5. But if you are going to interpret that conservatively, that we need to have two full access, which is, is not the language in the redevelopment plan, then we would certainly request that waiver of the board. The last section that we would need to, if again, we, we are not able to have the sidewalks to the existing street network, if we were unsuccessful to get to have them through the, the, to the RPM site, if we were not able to seek those DEP approvals, we would need to then ask for the waiver of having the sidewalks to the existing street network. But we are optimistic that we will be able to, to accomplish that, and then by connecting through the RPM, we will certainly have access to the adjoining street network. We have eliminated the request for the bicycle racks, which I'm happy to say that I think that that's a, a good idea. Most recently, I went out to the site, it was the first week of June, so I had an opportunity to go visit our site this phase, as well as to drive through the existing Phase 1. And I can tell the board that there are a number of bicycle racks existing in that development. That's an occupied development, and those bicycle racks were very well-used. So I do think it would be a, a good benefit to the community to have those on our site, and we can certainly work with your professionals, Mr. Coys and Mr. Mayhew, to locate them on the site, as we have had a willingness on behalf of the developer to provide those. And then I believe we have also eliminated the parking setback, the building to, on-street parking setback, as we are eliminating our boulevard. So that leaves us with just those six, in a most conservative interpretation. So that leaves us with just those six, in a most conservative interpretation, those six waivers that I identified for the stream corridor crossings, for the tree removal mitigation, the points of access, and then the sidewalks. So statutorily, if you treated these as waivers, the-
Let me stop you right there, just with regard to the sixth waiver that we were talking about, with regard to your item number six.
The sidewalk.
The pedestrian crossing to Phase One.
Right, to Phase One.
And that we wouldn't need potentially a waiver with regard to the stream crossing for that?
Yes, we would.
So I just want to make sure that that's also identified.
And that is something, again, if you look at the structure of the redevelopment plan, the Sherman redevelopment plan, that talks about the shared access and parking arrangements between adjoining properties is encouraged, and it specifically uses the terms "possible and practical." Wherever possible and practical, each parcel will provide cross-access easements for parking in access driveways, guaranteeing access to adjacent lots and surrounding streets. That's language that I consider, you know, we like to call that language aspirational, right? When it says "possible and practical," that is certainly not meant to be a mandate or something that shall be provided. It's something that, if it can be looked at and explored and accomplished, that you contemplate it, but it's certainly not something that the plan set forth as shall and shall be complied with. So I think as far as meeting the intent of the ordinance, which is when you're dealing with waivers, that's the test. Unlike things, if you treated these to the level of they had to rise to a variance, a bulk variance, the proofs are a little bit different, but when you're looking at waivers, you look at the intent, and are we meeting the intent of the plan or the governing ordinance? So even if this relief did rise to the level of a variance, I think we would certainly be able to meet our statutory burden of proof. They would of course be treated as C or bulk variances, because the use is certainly consistent with the type of use as well as the density established in the Sherman redevelopment plan. So that would leave us with C variance relief. I think the board could certainly grant this under the C1, which is a hardship, or the C2, flexible C, as multiple purposes of the land use law would be advanced by this. And I say C1 hardship because this is quite a constrained site. It's recognized in the redevelopment plan as a constrained site that has had a history of struggled ability to get developed in the past. I think it cites to 90 years. So it's been a long time to get a proper development program going here. So I think certainly both the C1 and C2, looking at purposes of the land use law, under the C2 section of the statute, I think that there are a number of them. Of course, Criteria A talks about promoting the general welfare, which when you're dealing with 100% affordable projects, the case law is very clear that they are inherently beneficial uses. But also Criteria C is established by this project, which talks about providing adequate light air and open space. I already told you earlier that we exceed the minimum requirements of dedicated contiguous uninterrupted conservation and open space at 66%, where the redevelopment plan requires 60. So I think reliance on C is appropriate. Also Criteria E, which talks about an appropriate population density. The density that's proposed by this applicant is exactly what was contemplated in the redevelopment plan in your housing element. Criteria I, which talks about a desirable visual environment. We've worked with your professionals to come up with, you know, a landscape and a layout that is attractive and efficient. And I also think Criteria M, inefficient use of the land, as well as Criteria G, sufficient space in appropriate locations, is advanced by this application. So statutorily, in order to meet our burden of proof, we would really only have to advance one or more purposes of the land use law. I just cited six for you, A, C, E, I, M, and G, that I think are advanced. And then that would leave us with a burden of proof with respect to the negative criteria. And of course, the land use law does not ask you to hold us or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grants of the variance would outweigh any detriment, and that there would be no substantial detriment to the zone plan or the public good. When you look at the goals and objectives that are in the redevelopment plan, and they reference back to the housing element and master plan, the goals of this rehabilitation or redevelopment plan are to provide parcels of land of sufficient size and dimension to enable an orderly arrangement of new land uses, to create land use and building requirements specific to the rehabilitation area that are sensitive to environmental features, particularly those associated with the Royce Brook and nearby residential uses, to curtail the encroachment of non-residential uses into the immediate neighborhood, and to require that 100% of the units constructed on-site meet low and moderate income affordability requirements. So those are the four redevelopment plan goals that are advanced. And then the master plan goes on to talk about providing housing type to serve all ages and economic segments, and to identify and manage stream corridor buffer areas by maintaining undisturbed vegetation, which we certainly do. So you have a project here that, in my opinion, is substantially consistent with your redevelopment plan, clearly advances all of the articulated goals and objectives stated in that redevelopment plan. So I can unequivocally say that in my professional planning opinion, this is a very important component of your affordable housing plan. The site was acquired using Affordable Housing Trust fund money and provides a substantial contribution to meeting your constitutionally mandated obligation to provide for low and moderate affordable housing units. And the relief that's required is really quite de minimis, and the confines and structure of your ordinance, to me, sets up very well to, for the board to grant the relief that's being requested for the reasons that I articulated and read from the ordinance.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions if the board or the professionals do.
Okay, Mr. Mahu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to clarify one of the items on your testimony, and I think we touched upon this at the last meeting, that your client is agreeing to make an interconnection between Phase One and Phase Two. According to the redevelopment plan, Section 3.4.3, Item E, as an echo, there should be bicycle circulation, accommodation will be made for safe bicycle circulation to and through the rehabilitation area. So I want to clarify that this connection between the two phases would be a paved connection.
It will be.
Yes, yes.
And it will be able to accommodate bicycles, so I'm assuming it should be six or seven feet wide?
Yes, yes, we would agree to that.
Okay, and ultimately, we'll see some plans that-
Of course, as a-
David's office will be able to review.
The only condition is that the DEP would have to approve it, so subject to DEP approval.
Right, which is what I, the reason we asked for the waiver still.
My understanding is you will make a good faith effort-
Oh, absolutely.
-to apply for a jump permit through the DEP.
Yes, and that is why we didn't eliminate our request for the waiver, because it is contingent on us securing the approval from the DEP.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, agree.
That's all I have at this moment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Coys.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Coys.
Do you believe, in your professional opinion, that the best access is Buffalo Street as opposed to some of the existing paper streets and existing surrounding network?
Yes, I had an opportunity to, after the last hearing and before I came here tonight, when I went to visit the RPM site, I went and drove some of those streets, and they are not RSIS compliant, they are not improved to those standards. And I think to, and I was here when I heard some of the residents from that area express concern about having the traffic come down those streets. So I think it is a clear demonstration that is a better zoning alternative to have that traffic go out to Camplain, rather than some of those smaller, I would consider more sleepier streets, some of them only have about four or five houses on them today.
So even if it meant by going through those, you would avoid having to go through the stream corridor?
Yes, I think it would be still a better zoning alternative. I think your ordinance does set up provisions to go through the stream corridor, and I think we are able to balance that. I think it's unbalanced, right? So much of what we do as planners is we have to balance things, and I think it's unbalanced, better to have the traffic go out to Camplain. That would also, because those roads are not improved to RSIS standards, that would be quite cost generative to have the applicant have to go and then improve those streets, and now you have to take the traffic from these 88 units and send it down streets that, like I said, my impression of those streets is that they're pretty sleepy, and when I was out there, I counted some of them had maybe, you know, four or five houses on them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Board members.
Let somebody else go first, for example.
Welcome back, Ms. Kaphon.
Thank you, Committeewoman Lepahin.
Sure, always nice to come back to work immediately off getting off a plane.
I like to throw myself right back into the mix.
She's a very hard worker.
With regards to pedestrian and bicycle movement around the site and the adjacent Camplain Road, obviously, it's a busy road, and there is a scoot stop around the corner, if you're, I don't know if you're aware, about a quarter mile or so to the south. Looking at the map here. At the west, at Sunnymead Road and Camplain, where obviously might be a place where people want to use mass transit. In your opinion, would you feel it would make sense from a safety standpoint to create some sort of safe walkway on Camplain Road to get to that site, in order to promote safe and effective egress to get to that bus stop?
So there are no other sidewalks on Camplain now.
Right.
So I'm not sure that that's where we want to encourage pedestrians to walk. Now, I think we may be widening Camplain at some point, but I don't know, you know, certainly we don't control all of that property, so I think it would be not desirable to have an incomplete path to encourage people to walk if there weren't the ability to do that. And since we don't control all of that, that would be very difficult for us to do.
With the fact that there is a school at the end of the paper streets there, would that be, do you feel if kids were going to walk to the school or go to the school, would they use the paper street, Jackson Street, whatever, you feel that's a safe way for them to go if they could leave instead of walking on Camplain?
I think that would be a better alternative than going on Camplain. I think it would be unsafe for them to go on Camplain without having the ability to have a full path.
So that access or egress or that emergency road, would it make sense to have at least a pavement along that emergency access, or people to walk to that street if they wanted to then walk out of the development to go to that school?
I think it would probably be more desirable to do what was done in the RPM site, and that's to have a site for the bus to pick up the children in the development, interior to the development, which is what was done on the adjoining property. There's a designated bus pickup area interior to the property.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments?
Okay, I just, I just quick, I don't know if this would be more of a point of confirmation, but with regards to the settlement agreement and the redevelopment plan, I know there's the tie between the Glengarry Project and this one. So as far as from what you understand with those two documents, I'll call them, that the building of the 88 affordable housing units wouldn't be adversely affected regardless of how many of the market rate units are actually developed?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Okay, so-
I didn't get the question, I'm sorry.
So with this plan, this is 88 affordable housing units, and I know, I'm just reading Ms. Kaphon's memo here, or report, you know, just making reference to the 380 market rate units, that regardless of how many eventually market rate are ever built, that it should not have any impact on the 88 units to be fully developed.
Well, there's a phasing plan, and from the settlement agreement, there's a phasing plan that's consistent with what we would be building.
Right, so you couldn't build, you couldn't build all the 380 non-affordable units and then say, oh, well, we think we want to do less than 88 affordable, so, and you had, there's a governor that kicks in for the amount of market COs that you get that you have to build the affordables. There can't be too big of a lag there. So it's definitely tied to the amount of market rate buildings, and I should have said this earlier, we discussed, this is a 24% affordable housing set aside, so it's-
Let me, Mr. Chairman, the agreement between the parties relative to what will be built at Sherman is tied to the number of units that's built at Glengarry. If the number of units at Glengarry is less than 380, the number of units at Sherman may be less than 88. But the current plan is the 380 and 88. And that's what the agreement says. Ms. Kaphon's testimony may have been slightly incorrect. This is not a standalone affordable housing project. This is tied to the Glengarry site, unlike Phase One, the RPM site, which is a standalone affordable site. Phase Two is part of the overall agreement for Glengarry to build market rate, for M&M to build market rate at Glengarry and affordable at Sherman.
Yes, I didn't actually use the word standalone, I said 100% affordable.
Well, you're using an all affordable housing project, which would lead one to-
Yes, it is absolutely tied to the 380, and my report references that. My report references specifically that this was tied to the 380 market rate units at Glengarry.
And I don't think, it didn't make a mention of phasing, so I just wanted to get, point of clarification.
It's set forth in the settlement agreement.
Set forth in the settlement agreement, set forth in the various other housing agreements.
Regulations.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Kaphon, the stream waiver corridor, the stream corridor waiver still requires DEP approval to allow the road to be built on Buffalo, is that correct?
Yes.
So in fact, the waiver being sought to avoid two measures of ingress and egress is still conditioned on DEP approving the one access point, is that correct?
Yes.
So if the, so I would assume, Ms. Elgar, that the applicant is agreeable to a condition of approval that if DEP does not approve the Buffalo Street access, you'll be back here for a whole new application relative to the access point, so that everybody is on the record and there's no issue down the road?
Well, I think that it would be just a general condition that we need to get DEP's approval. And obviously, if something changes that requires an amendment to the site plan because of that, we will be back before the board.
Based on your client's request for a waiver of a second access point, wouldn't that automatically condition bringing the application back if the only access point, if your waiver is granted, no longer exists?
If there's no access to the site, obviously, we have to come back.
Thank you. I want it on the record, in case there's a question down the road.
Well, I would imagine that if there's no access, obviously, that-
I, look, I-
You know, what's the point in building anything if there's no access, right?
It solves the-
Nobody can get there.
Irene, it solves the problem down the road that how come? Your client's aware, the public is aware, the board is aware, that the granting of the requested access waiver, if not approved by DEP, requires you to come back. That's-
Understood.
Thank you.
So with that, motion open to public.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, one favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public that would like to question the planner on her testimony, please come up, state your name.
Other than Mr. Wolfson.
I never thought I'd say this, but I actually agree with almost everything that Eric said.
Almost, for the record, almost.
I must really be jet lagged. Did I hear that right? Did I hear that right?
Maria Janusik, 2055 Camplain Road, property owner.
This is always awkward, because I hate to answer my questions, your questions with my back to you, but I can't turn my back to the board either, so I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I'm going to try to go to the side here.
That's fine, everybody else has been doing it, it's okay.
That's more comfortable for everyone.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Cofone, have you been before the Hillsborough planning a board previously?
Yes.
No, numerous times, Ms. Janusik, you've been here for a...
Do you always represent the developer?
No.
No? Oh, okay. So, at the, at the last minute now, references were made to the settlement agreement. What is the settlement agreement?
So, you want, it's up to you, settlement agreement between M&amp;M and Realty and the township of Hillsborough related to their litigation brought regarding the affordable housing.
The settlement agreement of M&amp;M Realty?
Of which this is a part of.
Is it the same, is it the same as M&amp;M at Camplain Road?
Yes.
Is the same?
Yes.
And so, what exactly does that agreement, agreement?
The agreement that you've asked about for the last six years. It's a requirement that they build 88 affordable units at Phase Two Sherman in exchange for 380 market rate, up to 380 market rate units on the Glengarry property of which they have been designated the redeveloper for this site.
So, they've been designated as the redeveloper for...
Sherman Phase Two.
And Glengarry is, is a total different...
Glengarry is, I refer to as the property, as the name of the property. It is part of, in exchange for building a market rate development on the old quarry site, the applicant is being required to build 88 affordable units on this site, and this is the application for the affordable housing on this site.
Okay, you're saying the applicant is being required?
As part of the settlement agreement.
Did the applicant, did the applicant choose to be the redeveloper?
The applicant and the township, the township chose to designate the applicant as the redeveloper as part of the agreement.
Okay, so currently, who is the owner of the property, the Sherman tract Phase Two property?
The township owns it, it will be transferring the ownership when, when this property is ultimately ready to be developed.
Transferring the property or selling the property?
For a dollar, you can call it whichever you want.
Hillsborough Township will be, will be selling this property for $1 to M&amp;M at Camplain Road LLC.
That is, or whatever ultimately the designated party is, but that, yes, M&amp;M at Camplain LLC is the currently designated party who will be acquiring the property.
I'm sorry, why do you say currently designated? Isn't this what we're talking about?
Because, Mrs. Janusik, as you have been through this process before, sometimes applicants change the name of the development for purposes of ownership, it is still the same property owner. We are transferring it to a subsidiary of M&amp;M Realty.
Okay, so...
By the way, none of this has anything to do with Ms. Cofone's testimony.
Well, but this, this was brought, this was brought up, this settlement agreement and the Glengarry project, so I just needed clarification on all of this. So, you're stating, Ms. Cofone, that this is a substantially conforming project?
Yes.
Okay, and it needs a handful of waivers? It got a little confusing between what were the waivers and what were variances. So, what is the handful of waivers?
So, I already testified to all of the waivers, and what I said was if they rose to the level of variances, we would meet the standard of proof for the variances. But those waivers were the stream corridor crossing, the tree mitigation waivers, the points of access, and the sidewalks were the general topics of the six waivers that I talked about.
The stream crossing, now, that, that is, so, that's an, that's an ordinance of the township in the stream, stream corridor, what is that, I'm sorry, is that section 188 there 64 was that?
Correct.
And, and what does, what does that, what does that ordinance specify?
Well, that ordinance is voluminous, it's a couple pages, so it sets forth the stream corridor crossing requirements, and then it sets up a framework for if the board were to grant waivers for that, what is permissible for the board to grant waivers and under what circumstances.
So, that ordinance protects, protects streams in the, in the, in the, in Hillsborough? Is that what, what the purpose of that ordinance is?
In part, yes.
So, you're saying, you have stated that this is a compelling need, but are there not other, other areas in Hillsborough that could be, that could be developed for affordable housing?
That's not part of her testimony is where it should be built, it's, please keep the questions to this application.
Ms. Cofone, did you, did you read anything of the Hillsborough's affordable housing plan?
I did.
Is there a section that says that there are constraints? Hillsborough basically is pretty okay with things being built except that there are environmental constraints?
Are we talking about generally, or are we talking about this site?
For the affordable housing.
Particularly this site, or are we, are you asking about generally in Hillsborough?
In the affordable housing plan, there's a section that talks about constraints in regard to building affordable housing, and one of the constraints is environmental properties that have environmental constraints.
Yes, but this site was selected and part of the township's affordable housing plan. So, while that may be true, and there may be other environmentally constrained sites, this site was found to be suitable, approvable, available, and developable, which is the criteria that needs to be utilized to select sites. And that settlement agreement, or that settlement plan was approved by the Corps. So, this site, again, while you may be correct, and there may be other environmentally constrained sites, this site was certainly in the plan, the housing plan.
Okay, you, you had stated that this, this property wasn't built on for the last 90 years?
I, yeah, there was something along, along those lines in the redevelopment plan.
Okay, and was there ever a reason given as to why this wasn't built on for 90 years?
So, reading from the redevelopment plan, page one, "The report found that in spite of a long history of proposals and approvals for both residential and industrial development on the property dating back over 90 years, none of those development approvals had come to fruition, fruition, and the property remains vacant." So, that was the statutory basis for the redevelopment plan in the Sherman redevelopment plan.
And, and how was that, in that, in that plan, how is this property described?
I don't know that I understand your question, in what plan? The redevelopment investigation, the redevelopment plan?
What you were, what you were just reading from, for the past 90 years?
Mrs. Janusik, you have examined the former planning director, multiple former township committees, as to the designation of this site as an area in need of redevelopment or an area in need of rehabilitation. Questions have been answered, the situation hasn't changed one bit, and the fact that it's mentioned in the redevelopment study doesn't make the situation any different than it has been for the last half dozen years.
And the situation is that one-third of this property is wetlands, there's a DNR Canal Commission easement, there are numerous, numerous, numerous environmental constraints...
Mrs. Janusik, questions, not commentary, please.
That's what I had asked, what, what is the, what is the, the description of this property in this plan? That's, this is all part of this application.
You have access to the plan, you could read it yourself.
I would like, I'm asking the planner, she has seen this, and if she would please answer the question.
I have it right in front of me, actually, it's on page one of the Sherman redevelopment plan, section 1.2, description of the rehabilitate, rehabilitation area. It describes it by tax parcels, it describes it by size, and it describes it by location.
And does it also state that there are wetlands and a DNR Canal Commission easement, and, and, and any other environmental constraints?
It references wetlands, floodplains, DRCC, commission buffers, on the southern, one-third of a lot.
Okay, also floodplains. All right, so what is the size of Block 86, Lot 21.02?
I'm not sure that that's relevant to her testimony.
That wasn't part of her testimony, Ms...
Yes, it was.
The size of the lot?
Yes, yes.
What was the answer?
Lot 21 in Block 86 covers 62.25 acres.
Okay.
Not Block 86, Lot 21, I'm talking about the one that we're talking about for Phase Two now.
Oh, Phase Two? This site's about 30 acres, roughly 30 or 32 acres.
Okay, and, and how many are usable?
About nine.
So, what, what is the reason why the other acreage is not usable?
That was part of Mr. Parkhill's testimony, and Ms. Cofone is not testifying as to why the rest of it is not developable.
Okay. You state, is, is this property in the stream corridor?
Yes.
Okay. And is that a desirable, you're stating that this is, that this is substantially conforming, is that building, building a stream corridor, is that, is that something that would be conforming for development?
This was a site that was designated by the township. It's not...
I'm asking if, 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 in a township that has a stream corridor ordinance, is that a desirable feature?
This is a site that was identified by the township as an affordable housing site.
I understand, this is in a stream corridor. I'm asking if this is a desirable feature to build a development in a stream corridor?
It's not for Ms. Cofone to answer that, though.
But this, this is what she's talking about, how, if this is a desirable location, why is desirable, why is conforming, if it needs waivers, that's all part of her testimony. How many trees are being removed?
1,500, I misspoke, it wasn't 4,000, I think it was 1,593.
The number of trees that are being removed?
Approximately 1,500.
What percentage is allowed?
20.
And, and how much is going to be removed?
37.
Okay. So, that's a huge difference. Trees aren't trees important on a, on a property, especially in an area where you have issues with flooding and you've got wetlands, so I don't see how that can be desirable. Is there, is there going to be pedestrian access from Phase Two, between Phase Two and Phase One?
If approved by the DEP, yes.
So, you have, so, so that, that, that's, that's a question right now, because we don't know if there's going to be access or not.
I cannot speak for the DEP.
Have you, have you addressed any safety issues on this property?
That's not my role in this project.
Currently, there's, there are, currently, there are two points of access? Are there two points of access?
Proposed, yes.
Proposed, are there currently, so currently, there are not two points of access? If it's going to be, if it's proposed, is it a yes or no, there is or there isn't?
Well, it's proposed, so...
It's in the plan.
A lot of things could be proposed, I'm asking, how many points of access are there currently?
It's proposed, but it has to be still approved by agencies.
So, right now, is there just one?
It's in their plan.
Right now, is there just one on Buffalo Street?
No.
There aren't any?
There are two.
What is the answer to, to what access there is on to this?
The answer is, there are no proposed points of access on the property this time, because the property is not developed to have points of access. The applicant is proposing one point of access and an emergency access and requesting a waiver, so there isn't a second point of access beyond the emergency.
Well, when you have a site plan and you're telling us this is where people, the, the, the potential residents...
No, you asked, no, you asked, Ms. Janusik, the question you asked was how many existing points of access are there? The answer to...
I didn't say existing, I said how many points of access.
No, you said existing.
I did not say existing.
Yes, you did.
I did not say existing.
Mr. Bernstein provided...
How many points of access are there?
Mr. Bernstein provided the answer. Next question, please.
So, there are two proposed, but currently, what you're showing...
The site is vacant, it's not developed, so there's nothing to access, it's, it's not a developed property.
But you're talking, you're...
The applicant is proposing one point of access, one emergency point of access, and a waiver as to the second point of access, not emergency related. That's the testimony, not getting any different. There are no points of access now because there's nothing on the site.
Based on, on, on the site plan and what is being presented to the public, how is this property going to be accessed?
Exactly as the testimony has been, the one access off the proposed Buffalo Street and an emergency access, they are seeking a waiver for the second point of access.
It's the fourth time you got an answer.
Seeking a waiver for the emergency?
No, the waiver for the second point of access, not emergency related. Which is the testimony of Ms. Cofone, the testimony of at least one other witness for the applicant before, and what's been discussed.
I'm sorry, I don't have it written on my notes, you stated that there's a need for a continuous uninterrupted what?
Open space.
Open space.
Get closer to the mic, I know you're, thank you, Christine.
Yes, sorry, the requirement is for 60% open space, and we have 66%.
And that would be, that would be on the acreage, that's not the nine acres that are, that are buildable?
Predominantly, yes.
So, what, what is on that open space property?
That was for Mr. Parkhill, he addressed that.
I'm sorry, what?
Mr. Parkhill, our civil engineer, addressed that. That's not for Ms. Cofone to address.
Ms. Cofone doesn't have to answer that question?
That's not her expertise.
Okay, so, right now, you're asking for waivers, but they may become variances, is that what is going on right now?
No.
Yes?
No. We're asking for waivers, but I provided, in an abundance of caution, I provided the testimony as if they were variances.
So, how many waivers are there that are waivers?
Six.
And those six, and are there any variances, requests for variances right now?
No.
All right, so you're calling them waivers that may become variances?
No.
Those were waivers that had been identified by the board professionals, so that's what we're addressing, are those waivers that had been identified by the board. And in abundance of caution, we're also saying that if perchance a court some later date were to say that it was not a waiver, we are showing justification that they would still qualify as variances.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, so then, a property that is 32 acres, in your opinion, that has only nine usable acres is considered a good location for this project?
This property, in my opinion, is a good location for this project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, okay. So, we've gone past 10.
Take a motion to extend.
I would ask that we just take a vote, because we've been here for three hearings already.
Well, I'm making, I'm asking, not an extension for you, I'm asking for a motion for the board to extend the meeting.
Oh, to stay later? I'm sorry about that, okay, gotcha.
If you'd like, however, for us to come to an end, we give guys for the waiver.
Vote away.
Mr. Chairman?
Vote away.
Mr. Chairman, the bylaws require that the, no more new testimony after 10, and that no more board action after 10:30. The board does have the right to extend beyond 10:30.
At 10 o'clock.
At 10 o'clock, normally we cut it off because that's what we require. But if you want to solve the problem, I would request the board make a motion to extend the time of the board meeting this evening.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. We do it by affirmation or vote over? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so the public can still come up and ask Ms. Caphone any questions on her testimony? Okay, no takers.
I assume, Ms. Elgar, that this is the last witness for this evening?
It certainly is.
And if anyone wants to come up relative to the overall application at this time before the board decides what action it will or will not take, this is the moment. Standard closing argument from the public.
Okay, any final thoughts from the public regarding this application? And please state your name and address for the record again.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 3, 2155 Camplain Road. My property will be severely impacted by this development. There are already issues with flooding. At the last meeting, there was a gentleman who lives on Camplain Road. I think his address was 2161, I'm not sure, 2163. And he stated that he's lived there for 32 years. And when this Phase One project came in, now with regular rain, his basement gets flooded, which it never did before. Now, you want to put a project on land that has wetlands, that's in a flood hazard area, that's along the Royce Brook, where from all over, water is coming into the Royce Brook. You're going to talk severe flooding. And then you had a planner come here and say, that's an ideal location. This is really beyond ridiculous. Hillsborough already has a lot of flooding problems. Superstorm Ida was devastating. And there's more building, and there's building on property with wetlands in flood hazard areas. This is beyond ridiculous. And why the township bought this property and is now selling it for $1? Sold one property already for $1 to RPM. And now is going to sell this other property for $1 to M&M at Camplain Road to create, and make it look like this is such a fabulous thing because you're creating affordable housing, is really, really a travesty. To build on that land, and it was mentioned, oh, it's an area in need of rehabilitation. What needed to be rehabilitated? Wetlands, flood hazard area, the land along the Royce Brook? This is going to cause flooding, and you know it, and you know it.
We're going to get to this phase. Grant Coleman, Taylor Avenue. You, I think you have to do this. I'll just state it from the public's point of view that objectively doesn't seem like a really great site. I wish the developer would really do a much better job at protecting the residents that are going to be there from flooding because this does not seem like a really great idea. But I think your hands are tied, and I'll recognize that. But it should be objectable no matter what, though.
Any other members from the public? Okay. Say then, motion to close?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any last words, Ms. Elgar?
No, thank you for having us, and thank you for extending. So I will not take any more of your time, so.
Mr. Bernstein?
Chairman, the request is to approve M&M at Camplain Road LLC, which ostensibly is also known as Sherman Property Phase Two. It is part of the township's affordable housing plan. It was part of a settlement agreement between the applicant and its other related companies. And the township is also part of the fair share housing agreement we have for this round. The applicant is asking, is agreed to, all of the conditions, I believe, in Mr. Coys's report, Mr. Mayu's report. Is that correct, Ms. Elgar?
There were a few that we did not agree to.
Other than those noted on the record by Mr. Allen back tonight?
Yes, they were.
Which the parties have agreed to relative to the conditions as the same on the record, correct?
As it's been stated on the record, correct.
As well as the requested waivers made by the applicant through the testimony of Ms. Caphone, with all parties under the understanding that the access issue is not agreed to by DEP. Well, I'll be back here again, or at least some of us will be back here again. That's the application, Mr. Chairman.
And we should know that it was approved by the courts.
This agreement has been approved by the courts.
Right.
Both of them, the fair share and this one.
Yes. Okay, so with that, does anyone would like to make a motion for approval as stated by Mr. Bernstein?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Final comments by board members. Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Vander Vliet? Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Quinian and Lefani?
I'll just say for the record, yes. But we hope that you will take into consideration the safety concerns that were brought up by our engineer, and that you do everything as you promised. Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Peasor?
Yes.
Chair Sriraj?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I hope everybody has a good evening, and...
Does Ms. Caphone have to stay for a while longer? It's like 4:00 in the morning right now.
We don't want her falling off her feet.
I know she does.
All right. So with that, just a reminder, everybody, oh, wait, we got to cancel.
Yeah, cancel.
So may I have a motion to cancel the June 27 business meeting?
It's all moved.
Second.
Okay. Do we got to, we need to do a roll call on that?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let me try.
Mr. Chairman, the next meeting of the board is Thursday, July 11. I remind you all, because unless you all want to be here on the 4th of July, we do have an application, and it does begin with the magic word W.
And, Mr. Bernstein? In terms of the resolution, I guess you'll be preparing it, and...
The normal course of events, as your office is aware, the man busily shaking everybody's hand, is that Mr. Lombardozzi will finish the transcripts. We will draft the resolution. We will circulate it to your office for review as well as to Mr. Mayu and Mr. Coys. Once everybody is happy, it comes back before the board. Understand that the board will meet on July 11, and the board will not meet again until September.
Which is why I was just making sure that...
I will endeavor to try to get it done, but the man who's controlling it right now is the court reporter.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we adjourn. See everyone on July 11. Good night.